Good morning. The Tuesday, January 28, 2025, regular Board of County Commissioners meeting will now be called to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent reflection for the first responders and members of our armed forces. There'll be an invocation by the Reverend Dr. Chrisel Bajol. And none other than our county attorney will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. That's Jennifer Shula. Thank you. Please rise. And since I don't see Dr. Bajol, may I ask the deputy to please?
Sure, absolutely. Please pray with me. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather as one. We thank you for the opportunity for these five to do what they are commissioned to do in the best interest of every community member of Indian River County. Father, we ask that you provide coverage for not only our law enforcement, our first responders, but those in our schools and those in our communities. Father, we thank you again for this opportunity, and we give all the praise to your son, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now move on to any additions, deletions to the agenda or any emergency items. We do have one, 11A3. That will be the Attorney Matters. For it was advertised for the developers agreement between Riverfront Groves Incorporated and Indian River County.
Mr. Chair, it's actually going to be under public hearings, should be 11A3, as you mentioned. Also, there is the Commissioner Matters, Commissioner Moss added, 15E1. And then, as a reminder, item 9E was moved to 12B for county administration. It's the lobbyist for the 2025 legislative session.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
On the, it's 4B, it appears on my copy, supportive legislation requiring hands-free cellphone. Mr. Lambert is here to speak about that, so he would speak during public comment about agenda-related matters. So I would just request that we hear that matter while he's here, if possible.
He'll be speaking during the public comment related to an agenda item.
Yes, sir, which is now number eight, looking at this.
Okay. And in addition, we do have something for the Value Adjustment Board under Attorneys Matters. And I'd like to move that up just post our, after our presentations, so we can sort that out early on.
If there's nothing else, I'll move to a per vouch amendment. Did you have something else?
I just wanted clarification on what we're adding.
And also, in addition, we're going to have a shade meeting at 10 o'clock. It must happen at 10 o'clock, it's a time certain. It's been advertised, the state attorney, the county attorney has requested a closed litigation session regarding the case of Michael and Jean Soleil. And it's a closed session, not open to the public, and it's pursuant to Florida State Statute 286.011 sub 8. So at 10 o'clock, we will be breaking, we'll be departing. We will have our shade meeting. It is anticipated that it will be an hour, so if we're waiting for anything, I just wanted to inform the public that we will be breaking for that hour. In addition, we do have, we're gonna have to adjust the entire agenda, because now, so we have also, I believe Leslie Swan has something, and we would do that before, I don't know how we're gonna do that before the shade meeting as well.
Well, isn't that 5B? It's already on here.
Yeah, just let's. I don't know how long the presentation is, this presentation is actually, all right, we can do it right then. All right, we'll leave it there and see how it goes. Okay? All right. Anything further to be changed? Just a few.
Okay. You had to make the motion, you had made.
Yes, I'll move to a per vouch amendment.
I will second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Moss and seconded by Commissioner Adams. Any further discussion? Let's see if we paid attention, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right. So with that, we're gonna start off with the proclamation of presentation, a presentation on human trafficking by, it was supposed to be Tracy Ruhlman, but I understand there's been a change, so please have that. Then you're from the Florida Faith Alliance.
I am, sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, and all of the esteemed council members. Thank you for helping our community become aware of the fastest-growing crime in the world today, child sex trafficking. I'm here today because we are in crisis for our children, and we believe addressing the crisis of human trafficking through awareness and action alongside our government leaders is one of the keys to bringing an end to this travesty. Since the pandemic, child sex trafficking has become the fastest-growing crime in the world. America is now the biggest buyer of sex, and Florida is number three in the nation for hotline calls. The buying and selling of humans is a multi-billion-dollar global market. Sex trafficking is in every state and every community. This horror is happening right here in Indian River County. Over the past year and a half, there have been 14 related arrests for child trafficking and child exploitation, and all of those have included child pornography. Social media has opened the door for predators and traffickers to bait and groom a child so they will come to them willingly. Sexting and sextortion is now the fastest-growing gateway to child trafficking. According to Homeland Security, recruiters within our schools, many the same age as our children, are being used to start these sexting rings. In Treasure Coast, four teachers have been arrested for sexting with students. Florida Faith Alliance has created powerful trafficking prevention videos called "Don't Take the Bait" for middle school and high school students. The Indian River County School Board voted unanimously this past year to bring these videos into all Indian River school counties, excuse me, Indian River County schools. We are now training school district employees and students. In 2025, we will be affecting over 70,000 children and 7,000 employees across two counties. Florida Faith Alliance founder and COO Lynn Barletta worked with Florida House Representative Toby Oviedo to help get HB3 passed. And as of January 1 of this year, Pornhub, the most viewed porn site in the world, has pulled out of Florida. Hallelujah. We have joined Ashley Moody, well, I'm gonna skip that paragraph for a second, go to the next one. This year, we will be bringing a Day of Defense to Indian River County as well. This will include demonstrations and training in self-defense, situational defense and online defense, empowering every age group to learn how to protect themselves against predators. We have joined Ashley Moody, I know she's moved on, but we've joined that office in seeking 100% of all county, city, town, business, and social organizations to take the one-hour free Florida Alliance to End Human Trafficking, awareness training to equip our citizens to recognize, report, and bring an end to this violence against the most vulnerable, our children. An update, as I wanted to share, is that Sebastian, Vero Beach and Indian River Shore City Councils have recently read into their 2025 records recognition proclamation stating that they stand against child sex trafficking, and they're gonna be taking the training, they're gonna require it for all of their employees. We believe that the anti-trafficking campaign that has been launched in our country can multiply to other counties throughout Florida. Together, we can do this. We can cross party lines, racial lines, economic and cultural lines. Now is the time. Proverbs 31:8 says, "Speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves; ensure justice for those who are being crushed." Together, we can unite to fight and set a loud and clear message, not on our watch, not in our county. Thank you for the opportunity to share this information with you today and your ongoing support.
Thank you for the presentation. The presentation in itself is moving this even more forward. You spoke today, we've all met, we've spoke, we've written a proclamation, we're involved. I think at least one of my colleagues has been involved in the positive end of this, that ugly process. I know I have. And I don't think there's a commissioner here that you didn't hit their heartstrings. I just want you to know that. The difficulty with that is, and this is the number-one weapon that our parents need to monitor. And yes, there are some endeavors, and I appreciate the fact that you're getting into the schools, their awareness, you're educating and going directly to the possible victims. Again, trafficking has been something that's occurred in many, many of our environments, in the restaurant trade, in the construction trade, and the sex trafficking trade, if that is a trade. Unfortunately, when it's hitting our children and they are beguiled into promises unfulfilled and their lives are turned around, it hits all of us. So we appreciate your presentation, the commitment to education, and let's keep it going and keep it aware, because awareness is what we all need to ensure that we're doing our part, we're monitoring, we are observing, and we are helping and correcting the curve. Thank you. Next item is a presentation by the Supervisor Elections. We're gonna hear about the most powerful mobile voter program that was deployed in the state. Welcome in, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Fletcher and Commissioners. I'm Leslie Swan, Supervisor of Elections, and I am excited to share with you this morning an innovative program that the Elections Office rolled out to boost participation in the 2024 presidential election cycle. The program was entitled "The Mobile Voter Program," or MVP, and it was a collaborative effort with the Senior Resource Association. The Senior Resource Association is the lead agency in Indian River County for promoting home- and community-based services to older adults and transportation services for all. The Elections Team formulated a month-long program to deliver election information and increase civic engagement to those who may be homebound or have limited mobility. I'd like to express my sincere appreciation to Karen Deagle, who is the President and CEO of the Senior Resource Association for our partnership. And also, we have Anita Wheeler, who headed up the program with our office. And I'm excited to announce that the Mobile Voter Program was recently awarded the Election Center's Stars and Stripes Award. And for those of you who are not familiar, the Election Center is a national organization comprised of elections officials from across the country. And after we won that award, in December, we were notified that our program was selected by the members of the Election Center as one of the recipients of the People's Choice Award. So we are going to be traveling to Little Rock, Arkansas, to present our program to those in attendance at the national conference. So I'd like to share a short video of the highlights of the program. Hi, I'm Leslie Swan, Supervisor of Elections for Indian River County, Florida. I'm excited to share with you our 2024 Mobile Voter Program, or what we affectionately call our MVP Program. Recently, the Florida Legislature passed a new law requiring voters to renew their vote-by-mail ballot on a more frequent basis. Having to renew ballots every general election cycle is new to the voters in Florida, so we wanted to make sure that we got the word out. As the 2024 presidential election cycle was quickly approaching, the Supervisor of Elections Team implemented a creative program in collaboration with the Senior Resource Association of Indian River County to be able to reach a group of folks who are either homebound or have limited mobility and typically vote by mail.
Hi, I'm Karen Deagle, CEO of the Senior Resource Association. The Senior Resource Association is recognized as the lead agency in Indian River County for community and home-based services as well as transportation for all. Services offered by Senior Resource Association include Congregate Meal Program, Meals on Wheels, our Community Coach bus system, and our goal-line transportation, public transportation. We estimate that the MVP Program reached over 1,800 people in Indian River County served by Senior Resource Association.
Partnering with the Senior Resource Association allowed the Supervisor of Elections Team to personally engage those served by this association. Many individuals face barriers to accessing voting information due to lack of mobility or transportation. By engaging these individuals, it ensures their voices are heard, upholding the democratic principle of inclusivity and representation for all citizens. The Elections Office assembled 1,800 mobile voter packets. The packets contained a vote-by-mail request form, a voter registration application and return envelope for new voters and those needing to update their voting information, a voter guide, a government official's guide, frequently asked questions brochure, a pen, American flag, and a sweet treat. Beginning the first week of January, SOE staff were on-site for the Senior Resource Association's Congregate Meal Program, which provides meals five days per week for approximately 300 people. All in attendance at the five meal sites were provided a mobile voter packet and the opportunity to have their voting questions answered. During the second week of January, SOE staff participated in the Meals on Wheels Program, which provides meals to individuals who may not have the resources to access or prepare food due to lack of transportation, functional limitations, or health problems. Election staff and Meals on Wheels volunteers delivered hot lunches to seniors at their homes and provided them with a mobile voter packet. Throughout the week, more than 500 informational packets were delivered to homebound individuals. As part of the ongoing mobile program, election staff traveled to the Senior Resource Association's ADA Accessible Goal Line, a no-cost public transit system, and offered riders election information. Inside the buses, signs displayed a QR code directing bus riders to renew their vote-by-mail ballot request, register to vote, or update their voter record via the Supervisor of Elections website. The Senior Resource Association also operates the Community Coach, a door-to-door transit system for eligible riders that can accommodate riders who use wheelchairs, walkers, canes, service animals, and other mobility aids. More than 1,000 riders received mobile voter packets.
Hi, I'm Anita Wheeler, I'm the Elections Office Community Outreach Coordinator. By collaborating with Senior Resource Association, we were able to reach underserved voters who use public transit, take advantage of the Congregate Meal Programs, receive the Meals on Wheels, and utilize the Community Coach. The MVP packets allowed that one-on-one interaction and allowed the recipients to feel socially connected. So by going mobile, voter awareness was personally delivered to our harder-to-reach residents of Indian River County.
I don't know if Karen wants to say a word.
Yeah, I think so. Congratulations to the Supervisor of Elections Office, great partnering. We have always partnered with them throughout the years on different programs. But this was pretty special, because we got to hit a number of different programs, a number of different clients that we take care of. And a number of them are homebound, as you saw. And what a great thing to have somebody come to their home, explain to them what's going on, and assist them in getting them registered to vote by mail. Being on the buses, that, you know, time to interact with our riders and acknowledge that they are important, their vote is important. So congratulations to all of you for what you do and the awards that you've won.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you for the presentation and the commitment. There's been outreach over the years, but I have to say, you utilized a great resource and put it into motion, and you've exceeded probably the expectations, your own expectations, but also the expectations. That's why you were so honored, and we're honored to have your staff working so hard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, we've moved up the Attorneys Matters on the Value Adjustment Board. We have our attorney, as well as, I believe, the Value Adjustment Board Attorney here, so, Counselor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman and the Board, Florida statute requires that the Board of County Commissioners appoint two commissioners to serve on the Value Adjustment Board. And the statute states that the two members of the governing body, as elected from the membership of the Board, serve on the Value Adjustment Board. And then it says, "One of whom shall be elected Chair of the Value Adjustment Board." This year, the commissioners that are appointed to the Value Adjustment Board are you, Chairman Fletcher, and Commissioner Ehrman. So traditionally, at the first meeting of the Value Adjustment Board in August, the members of the Value Adjustment Board had been selecting the Chair and the Vice Chair. But last year, the General Counsel for the Florida Department of Revenue came out with an opinion stating that it should be the Board of County Commissioners who are appointing the Chair before that meeting happens, so that there's someone in place and ready to go when the organizational meeting starts. The clerk of the court has requested that this Board appoint the Chair and Vice Chair, which makes sense, because since a commissioner has to be serving as Chair, it makes sense that we are appointing the Chair and the Vice Chair. So I did reach out to the Value Adjustment Board Attorney, Mr. Nicholas Spikowski. He's here, he was very helpful in interpreting this language, and he agrees with this recommendation I'm making to you. He's available for questions if you have them. My recommendation is that this Board elect a Chair and a Vice Chair of the Value Adjustment Board.
Thank you, Counselor. And at the present time, I am the Chairman, and the Chairman of the Value Adjustment Board, and Commissioner Ehrman is the Vice Chairman of the Value Adjustment Board. It's a commitment that we have both served for quite some time. And traditionally, we have changed and become Chair or Vice Chair. And I think it would be customary, honorable, and again, I do, well, I cannot make motions. I can make recommendations for appointment. So at this time, I would like to appoint, nominate Commissioner Ehrman as Chair of the Value Adjustment Board.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Or I'll make the motion, was that a motion technically? Okay, I'll second it, thank you.
No, yes, yes, that would be appropriate. I can appoint, I just can't. I can't appoint, I just cannot make motions.
Yes, I'll second the appointment.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
To nominate Commissioner Fletcher as our Vice Chair. Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? That's kind of a moot point. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Well, we'll continue on, and thank you for the application and change, and I want to thank the Value Adjustment Board Attorney to ensure that we are in compliance with the state directive. We'll move forward with, there's no approval of minutes. And informational items, well, you all noticed that there's some socks at your microphone, and we, I believe we do have a presentation.
That would be me. I'm not Barry Shapiro, I'm Bob Stanley with the formerly Vero Beach Sock Drive, now the Treasure Coast Sock Drive, as we are from Melbourne to Port St. Lucie. Barry was contacted about seven years ago from a friend up in New Jersey who runs a shelter, and he wanted, of all things, socks. And he contacts Barry, I'm sorry, he wanted coats, and Barry says, "This is Florida, you know, what's going on?" Of course, lately. But anyway, so he checked around, Barry's curious, and with the shelters and charities, he found out that the number-one request for the needy, the less fortunate, is socks. So Barry decided to put a few boxes around businesses, expecting to collect maybe a few hundred socks, and he wound up with 1,000. So he gave some charities here in the community, a couple charities, some socks, and shipped up to New Jersey. The next year, people contacted him, "Barry, what's going on? We want to give socks." So 3,000 the next year, and so on. So the next, the past six years, we've had 45,500-plus socks, new packaged socks, men, women, and children. So this year, the goal is 20,000. I think we'll hit it because our PR Director, Jerusha, contacted CBS TV in West Palm Beach. We had a feature, as well as on CBS and Fox down there. So we're out there, people know of us. We've got 40 collection boxes around the area. That's one way to donate. Another easy way, the QR code on the box or on the posters you see around town or on our business cards will lead you to Amazon. So it's the least expensive, you punch a button, bang, you've donated. So either way, please donate. We've got 22 charities that are accepting the socks. Hibiscus Children's Center, we've got Hope for Families, the Vietnam Vets, so it covers everybody, men, women, children. I do want to thank, we have 44 community partners. I won't name them, but I will thank, I can, okay, here we go. White Glove Moving and Storage donates the boxes. Packmail Beachside will send out boxes gratis to a charity in Broward, one in Rochester, New York, and one in Jersey. And also ABC Printing does for free our printing of all our materials. Get out your calendars, two important dates coming up, this coming Thursday, well, a week from Thursday, the 6th of February downtown at the 1420 Coffee Shop, we have cops with socks from 8 until 10:00. So if you bring in a pack of new socks, you get a free cup of coffee served by baristas in uniform. Two guys up there can relate to that. And then the other thing, two days later, Saturday, at Walking Tree Brewery, we have our annual hop sock. What is it called? The Sock Hop.
Sock Hop.
Too many socks in my head. And you bring, you bring a pack of socks there, you get a free beer. You can also possibly win a year of free beer. We've got Professor Pennygood's Mighty Flea Circus for music. If anybody knows Tamara Duressen or Pin Up Girls, they'll be performing. There'll be dance lessons and other giveaways. So again, that's at Walking Tree on the 8th. Now, for the fun part, oh, this goes on January and February every year. The fun part, everybody, as Commissioner Chairman Fletcher said, has some socks. Boy, he's warming up right now. We're not going to embarrass you. We're going to get up the box over here in front of the two dunk shots. I think Susan Adams and Joe, you'll have the easiest shots. And at once, if you all throw your socks toward the box, that's where, if you miss the shot, nobody will really know because it's kind of all mixed in in the shots instead of individually. Let's go, Janet.
Where's the ball?
Yeah, he's a ball player.
We're allowed to stand up, right?
Yeah.
I can see it. I can see it.
Just get warmed up.
It'd be very embarrassing if I missed.
Okay.
I can't watch the faces while we have the TV.
You're going to get pegged in the back of the head, I'm just kidding.
Oh, do you want a helmet?
He's not going to move to help us, we have to hit it over there.
One, two, three, go! Oh!
That was pretty impressive. Pretty impressive.
Okay, wait, can I get a photo with the box?
Yeah, why not? Turn the thing around, she's going to talk to you later about that if you don't.
Fabulous.
A fun campaign, and thank you for coming back. I don't think everybody can appreciate how important socks really are. If you've ever been out there, it's a very important element. Thank you. With that, and that box will be displayed in our lobby, and we hope to see it filled. Thank you. Next item is public comment. These are generally related items with the exception of public hearings. So this is your opportunity, if you wish to speak on any agenda item, if you didn't want to stay till later on, you most certainly are invited to speak. We've also invited your speaker.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. That's Mr. Hal Lambert with BikeWalk, and for those who don't know, he's the Director of Safety, and BikeWalk is a local nonprofit whose mission is to promote safe bicycling and walking as a means of transportation and also recreation. So they're partnering with Vero Cycling, which has more than 350 members locally, to urge support for this legislation involving, or requiring, I should say, hands-free cellphone use while driving. You may recall, I think most of us attended the Legislative Delegation Day on January 6th, and Mr. Lambert presented this, well, for the community, presented this idea of supporting this legislation to Senator Groll, who expressed support for it right then and there. I spoke with her after the session, and she reiterated that, that she firmly supports this, and I spoke with her again at the ribbon cutting for the reopening of 512. And what she said to me is that these letters are, these are, these resolutions of support are very important to get this through. And that's, of course, one of our charges, is the safety of the community, and especially affects our young people, which I hate to see, and Mr. Lambert will talk more about the statistics, but young people under the age of 30 are 63% more likely to text while driving, and that, it can be deadly, and if not deadly, devastating. Oh, and this, just as, by way of background, this resolution follows several that have been adopted locally, and that includes Indian River Shores, the Town of Orchid, Sebastian City Council voted on it last week, Vero Beach City Council will be voting on it, I think, at their next meeting, and that would include us. And there's also a letter from the Sheriff in support of this. So I say that by way of background, it has widespread support among the municipalities, so we would just be adding to that support. And Senator Groll then would appreciate this and would be able to use it in Tallahassee. If Senator, excuse me, if Representative Milo does not pick up on it, then Senator Groll has indicated that she herself will sponsor, be a sponsor for the bill. And Mr. Lambert, would you please elucidate the matter further? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Moss, for those comments and for getting this on the agenda through consideration, and thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak to this issue. I won't repeat all the facts that are contained in the resolution, but I'll just say that Florida has one of the highest fatality rates of, in the country, and Florida drivers actually kill more pedestrians and bicyclists than any other state. Every day, nine people die on Florida roads, six of them attributed to distracted driving. As you can imagine, this is very important to us, to cyclists and pedestrians. Our lives may very well depend on this legislation. A seven-foot buffered bike lane is great, but it's not good to protect you from a distracted driver. If you get, if you do get hit by a distracted driver and on a bicycle or as a pedestrian by a car during 45 miles an hour, your chances of being killed is 85%. At 58 miles an hour, it's 99%, 99%. We do have a no-texting law in Florida, but the problem with it is not strong enough because you can use your phone legally to, for navigation, and that requires you to enter characters into your phone as if, as if you were texting. You can also use your phone while the vehicle is stationary. We've all experienced road rage at, or maybe not road rage, but maybe impatience at traffic lights while people are using their phones. As Chairman Fletcher said, this, this can be the enemy because there are so many apps out there. As a matter of fact, the phone app is actually in tenth place for the popularity of apps being used by drivers while they're driving. If you have a law that's enforceable, if it's simple and clear, if the officer sees a person holding their phone, they can get a ticket, that if you run the risk of getting a ticket by holding your phone, you're less likely to initiate a text or use your phone while the vehicle is stationary or respond to that text at the next light. So it's going to keep traffic flowing, it's going to keep people more engaged in driving. After all, you're, you are, it takes, it takes eyes, it takes hands on the wheel, it takes eyes on the road, and it takes your mind focused on driving to drive safely. So thanks again for considering this this morning, and please show your support by adopting this resolution. This legislation will prevent injuries and save lives. Thank you.
Thank you for being here today, Mr. Lambert. I just want to add one more thing. Senator Groll indicated to me that the bills go through committees mid-February, so it's, you know, it's time-sensitive. Any comments? All right, well, then I'll move to, move to approve, a public comment.
You have some, some comments, just some history. Senator Groll was actually instrumental in, as we were driving forward, for texting while driving. It took two years of work to get it to where it's at right now. One of the resistant factors was that many on the committee did not want to see the ability for a law enforcement officer to be able to stop an individual if they were merely holding it and having to go through the discussion of what's on your phone. I know it hit hard to at least two of us. At the time, the Sheriff was the Sheriff, and I was fighting to get texting while driving on the Board and on the, in the committee, and I have to tell you that there was a lot of resistance about anyone wanting to hold a cellphone and being stopped. So this would be a very large move going forward, but it may put our law enforcement officers in a different light, and it also will create another element, as you're saying that it will be preventative and it will save lives. I can't disagree, but the concern is that there might be other litigation taking place just because someone's holding a phone. Most vehicles that you purchase today have at least a six- or an eight-inch by 12-inch screen on them at this time. Unless you own a '59 Ford, you're going to have a screen on your TV, I mean, a TV. That was, that was a slip too, a subliminal slip, because some of them are quite large. And many years ago, you could not have any type of cathode ray tube device, light emanating device on your dashboard. Now, the car manufacturers are making them where I think you're going to have a panoramic view. They're all distractions. Some of them have night modes, but I think these are here to stay, and I think that if we can eliminate them, we will save lives. I just think it's an uphill battle. There's nothing on the legislature at this time. I don't recall the discussion that you are recanting. Yes, we were all in the room. I don't recover that unless it was a private conversation, but by the same token, it's a very positive thought. I understand it's on the bicycle advisory agenda.
Yes.
And it should have gone through the MPO. You mentioned that it's time-sensitive. I don't necessarily know if it is time-sensitive. It's rallying, it's moving forward, and it's in a hope that it gets on the discussion up in Tallahassee. I, you know, I just want to temper everybody's expectation because I did check, there is nothing in the works right now, other than a discussion and many of these resolutions. I just wanted the public to also understand where it is and what we're, what's trying to be accomplished.
If I may just say one word about hands-free, and it is, it is, we are facing, you know, technological onslaught of distraction. That is true. But there actually is a hands-free on, in the law right now as it applies to school zones. So they realize, the legislature has realized how important it is for people to be hands-free around school zones. You're traveling 20 miles an hour, there are officers usually present, and, you know, if it makes sense there, why not carry that into greater speeds and in other areas where much more fatalities are taking place? So that's the logic. It's not going to stop it. It's, in states that have done this, in 31 states that have done this, they've reduced the distracted driving crashes by 15 to 25%, depending on, depending on how well it is advertised, how well-informed the public is. That's a big part of it. It's not going to stop all of it, but if it saves 20% of lives of those 10 people, if it saves two lives a day, you know, it's worthwhile. And everywhere it's been implemented, it has, it has worked, and insurance rates have gone down, so it's just one more thing we can do. Please? Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much for being here. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for your comments. I appreciate that. You're quite correct, it is an, it will be an uphill battle, and I think that's will be an uphill battle, and I think that's a good idea. Perhaps MPO could do a similar resolution and add to that push. I did have the two private conversations with Senator Graul, but the initial one, but that was based on testimony, which is videotaped that day. She agreed right on the spot to support Mr. Lambert and BikeWalk, yeah, as well while we were all sitting here. So that's on video. Any other comments?
Just a very, it's a painful time when you see a car tragically just malaligned, an individual hurt, and one of these lit on the floor somewhere or somewhere in the vehicle. Specifically, everyone denies, "I wasn't on the phone. I wasn't communicating. I wasn't texting."
Yeah.
It's all verifiable.
Yes, you've certainly seen that side of it. If there are no further comments, do we need to take public comment? Or I'll make a motion when it's the appropriate time?
Anyone wishes to speak on the matter? Otherwise, this was moved into agenda-related items, and you placed it on the agenda. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on it? If not...
All right, then I'll move to approve support for legislation requiring hands-free cellphone use while driving. It's a resolution.
Second.
We have a motion in a second on the resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for the presentation. Let's see where it goes. Just watching the watch, and as we're entering, is there any other public comment on an agenda item? With 15 minutes ago, let's try it. Let's go on to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that anyone wishes to pull?
9H.
9H Hotel. Any other items for discussion? Seeing none, now we've obtained a motion.
Motion approved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Airman, seconded by Chairman Law. Any further discussion? Motion was to approve as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 9H Hotel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the community, 9H has to do with the Children's Services Advisory Committee. It's an updated guidebook. The history of this is actually pretty interesting. I was the county commission liaison to what is affectionately referred to as CSAC a number of years ago, two years ago approximately. And the guidebook was unearthed literally at that time. It dated back to the late 1990s, but even the members who were on it were not aware of its existence. It was Ms. Emerson's predecessor who unearthed it. And anyway, this guidebook is a lot more comprehensive than the previous one, with which I am familiar. I think there are two things here that need to be considered that have to do with... It got a little more complicated, and I'll explain the organization of it. There's the main CSAC committee, and that main committee can organize as many subcommittees as it wishes. It has the power to do that. Currently, there are two subcommittees. One is for needs assessment, and this all has to do with children and their needs. So one has to do with needs assessment, and the other has to do with grant review. And by grant review, nonprofits come and they apply for CSAC money. Currently, we're spending close to $3 million annually on children's services. So these are, you know, these are very important committees. And we, as a commission, have done a lot of work on this the last few years, and the staff has done a lot of work on this, which, you know, I'm very happy to see. I was the one who brought it forward a couple of years ago and just asking questions to make it more accountable, to make it more transparent, and I think that has happened and will continue to happen. The reason why I pulled this today, this has to do with that guidebook, which has been updated, you know, 20-some-odd years later. I think there are two things that we might want to consider as a commission with this, and that is, it gives the list of the current subcommittee members that were just approved recently. And for the community, generally, the county commission is the final stop, and we affirm or deny approval to advisory boards and commissions. In fact, we have a meeting coming up, if you're interested. I think it was at the last meeting in February, where we're going to be going down the entire list. And by the way, I encourage everyone, we do have vacancies, so you can go to our website if you want to be on an advisory board or commission, indianriver.gov. But at any rate, so currently, there are people that were appointed by the main subcommittee. So you have the main subcommittee appointing, excuse me, the main committee appointing members of two subcommittees. So these people, you know, they have not come before us in any way, shape, or form, as is true with all other boards and commissions. We either approve them directly, or we review it periodically, as we will, the end of February, to see if they want to be reappointed and should they be reappointed. So this just lists people, you know, some of... It should be presented to us, I think, and not in this manner. It should be presented in detail to us, should we require it. The second thing is, I think what we're doing here is adding procedure, and I'm looking at the guidebook, pages eight and nine, and that's chapter two. And what is said there is that the main committee votes on who should be in each of the subcommittees. And I don't find that specifically stated in any of the ordinances that were changed, and I'm in agreement with the ordinances that were changed. But this particular procedure, process, if you will, does not appear in any of the ordinances directly. It doesn't say that the main CSAC committee shall vote for each member of whatever subcommittees it chooses to designate or chooses to create. That doesn't appear anywhere. So I think we might want to revisit that at a later date, and I think we might also want to add these people to our review because we're the final stop. We're responsible to you. And I always appreciate volunteers on any committee, but their charge is, their mission, and in this case, it's to children, all right? It's not, it may be perhaps secondarily to you, but that's, you know, that's general, generally speaking. But our mission always is your best interest, and that's the entire community. So I just want to be sure that we are being transparent with this and being accountable. We've come a long way. So I'm just saying, I can't support this as-is. I think I would ask my colleagues that this be added, these appointments be added to the review that we already have scheduled for the second meeting in February. I don't think that should be a problem. I think that's being, you know, transparent, and, you know, we can take a closer look, and so can you, you know? So that way, the community knows, you know, what is going on. In the past, it was, for those who knew about it, it was viewed more as a club than a committee. And, you know, we're trying to move away from that. We're trying to keep things public, keep things very transparent. So in the interest of that, that's why I pulled this item, and those are my concerns. And I cannot support this item.
Any comments?
I...
You're the current chair.
I'm the current chair as of the last meeting. Well, no, I'm not the chair. I'm just, I'm the commission liaison.
A little later on, we'll figure that out.
So I just have a point of clarification. The issue that you are having is that the subcommittee members, meaning the needs assessment and the grant review subcommittee, are appointed by the main children's services advisory committee and then don't come to us for ratification, if you will, or as a recommendation for our approval.
Yeah. I mean, I think everybody should, on any advisory board. I don't think there is a reason for any advisory board to be exempt from that.
I'm certain.
Okay. Yeah, we have five minutes, I believe. So my only concern with that is, I understand what you're saying, for sure, how it would affect the timing of the work of those two committees because they are currently having meetings because the RFP process is upcoming. I know needs assessment has meetings from time to time, so I wouldn't, and I mean this kindly about us, but we're not sometimes the most efficient group about getting our business accomplished. You know, it might take a couple of meetings to get it on the agenda, and I wouldn't want that to hamstring the work of...
They're going forward. I mean, they're not, you know, they're going forward. They're doing their work. I have the minutes to the meeting. They've already conducted the elections. The people were elected last November, so it's not going to stop anything. It's already happened. I only found out about it after the fact.
No, I mean, as we move forward, because if they're going to appoint people to the subcommittees, and then technically, they're not serving on those committees until they can get to our agenda to be ratified, there could be a delay. So...
Well, they're serving on them.
Right now, but if there's a hole or somebody resigns, it could cause a problem. So my question to you is, can the CSAC main committee make the appointment, and they can start serving, and it comes to us for ratification? And if there's some issue, then...
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think, it's my understanding, they already are serving.
I just don't want to, in the future, just for a clean process.
Yeah. Yeah, they were elected last November, so it would be my understanding, they're already serving, or they're within the process of procedure that occurs.
We are going to have to bring this back at another time, and as we need to move forward for the other meeting as well. So I'll be happy to...
Why don't we do this? Why don't we make a motion to approve it as presented in Commissioner Moss, if you want to get with the attorney, to make some suggested language changes, to make that happen? Since they're already serving, you can bring that back as your item, and then we'll have time to have a more in-depth discussion about that specific thing. But I think the guidebook has some RFP stuff that needs to be approved, so that can move forward. Because I don't disagree with you, I just have a little bit more questions that we probably won't resolve.
And the timeliness.
Can we agree to add these to our review? We already have that scheduled, to review the advisory boards and commissions at the second meeting in February.
I think we need a motion to approve at this juncture to continue forward, and if there's any changes to be made, they will be made in the future separately.
Chris have something?
I just, we can change it however the commission wants to. As the guidebook is currently written, it does track the ordinance currently. It changed in 2022. It changed from the board appointing every member to both committees, to the subcommittees and the larger committee.
So if we change this, we'd have to change the ordinance?
Correct. It does track the ordinance currently.
I don't disagree with you. I'd like to have a fuller conversation about that specific issue, but why don't I go ahead and make the motion to approve this now and ask you to bring back some changes that, with language that also mirror, maybe talk to Chris, that mirror whatever ordinance changes would have to be made to make that work.
Okay. Well, we'll do.
Okay.
That's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed. No.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Moss dissenting. At this time, we will begin to commence our closed litigation session. It's estimated that this will take approximately one hour or less, hopefully. And attending board members will be myself, Vice Chairman Daryl Law, Commissioner Susan Adams, Commissioner Joseph Airman, Commissioner Laura Moss, state-certified court reporter, as well as our attorney, Jennifer Shula, John Tidcannage, our county administrator. And at this time...
And Mr. Chairman, I do need to say something on the record. I need to say something on the record, and so the...
That's what it is about.
Yeah, so I need to state on the record that I need advice concerning some litigation...
Please, please, please. Thank you.
I need to state on the record that I need advice concerning the litigation Michael and Jeannie Soul versus Indian River County.
Thank you.
Everything that has, is very scripted and statute as to how this needs to go. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be now moving forward. We'll be now moving forward.
We are now reconvening, and the closed litigation session has been concluded, and we are happy to return to our regularly scheduled meeting. And thank you to our certified court reporter for denoting this. At this time, we'll move on to the supervisor elections, request for reimbursement for municipal fees. We have attached letter and the book closing party.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
Leslie Swan, Supervisor of Elections. I'm here today. We conducted three municipal elections during the general election in 2024, and I'm asking that those funds that we receive for conducting the election be rolled back into our current budget year because we don't allocate the municipalities' costs into our budget.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairman Law, seconded by Commissioner Adams. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Sorry you had to wait.
That's okay.
Thank you for your patience.
No worries.
Next, we'll go on to public hearings. We have item 11A1, which is the Children's Services Advisory Committee Ordinance Amendment. This is legislative in nature. Good morning, Counselor.
Good morning, Commissioner. As you just stated, this is an amendment to Section 103.22 of the county code. This amendment was first suggested by Commissioner Irman in December after a vote of the CSAC Board on December 10th. And essentially what it does, well, exactly what it does is it takes the commission appointee and makes him a non-voting member, and also the chairman of CSAC committee, as well as adds one more member to the committee who is voted on by the board. So that way, the board has 15 members and doesn't have a possibility of a deadlock. This was, again, suggested by Commissioner Irman. This was unanimously decided on by CSAC to recommend it to this board, and this board unanimously voted to go forward with this. But today, we're here for the public hearing, and with that, we're asking the commission to open the public hearing and then take any comment and decide whether to amend the code accordingly.
Thank you. Any questions of Counselor?
No, I would be happy to do something after the public hearing has been opened and closed.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, we have to wait. The other element I wanted to discuss is that it has been the opinion that when we reset the ordinance, we reset everyone's terms in the committee as far as continued performance in their appointed, selected positions. How does this affect those terms that are running currently now?
I don't believe that the change we're making today change any of those terms because we are simply changing the position of the commissioner who is appointed and adding a new person. So it does not affect any of the previously appointed members. In order to change that, we'd have to have a specific ordinance that said it is retroactive or that we're changing the terms for some reason, and this is not doing that. The new person who would need to be appointed, their term would start just as if they were appointed prior to this. It would just start at that date, and it would move forward that way. But this has not reset any of the terms or have anything to do with changing those. People who are already appointed does not change anything that they're already appointed to.
I wanted clear edification and clarification because what has been appointed in the past was anytime we reset the ordinance, we reset the terms. And I wanted to clarify today.
Yes, sir. And I do not believe it does. The case law that goes along with it is pretty clear to me that unless you're specifically saying you're changing something, you only change what is specifically changed. It does not reset everything because you're changing very specific sections of the code, not the entirety of the code.
Thank you. With that, we have to open up a public hearing at this time. This is your opportunity to speak, and public hearing is now open. One microphone is occupied, but there's additional one. Having given ample opportunity, I see no one coming forward. At this time, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I'd be happy to move approval. Second.
That's a close second there. That's a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by Commissioner Irman. Any further discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Yeah. Oh, okay. Is paper being disseminated?
It came from the clerk.
And we want to ensure that the clerk has it. Okay. There you go. All right. Next item is 11A2, which is the appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission decision on rezoning request by Red Jasmine Land Company, LLC. There is an appeal letter on file, a P&amp;Z staff report, unapproved meeting minutes, and a staff report as well. This agenda item is an appeal by Red Jasmine Land Company of the Planning and Zoning Commission's denial of its request to rezone approximately 4.2 acres from CL Limited Commercial District to CG General Commercial District. Under Indian River Code, if the planning and zoning votes to deny a rezoning application, that decision is final unless it is appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. The appeals of the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to deny a rezoning is de novo, new hearing. In other words, the Board of County Commissioners must conduct a quasi judicial hearing to consider the rezoning. This is a quasi judicial proceeding. In other words, the Board of County Commissioners must conduct a quasi judicial hearing to consider the rezoning. This is a quasi judicial proceeding, and the parties are Indian River County and Red Jasmine Land Company LLC, also known as the applicant. I need to ask a few questions. I want to ask the commissioners if they've had any ex parte communications, site visits, or independent investigations. We'll start with the left.
None to my knowledge. None to my knowledge. I am aware where it is because I drive by there a lot, but no site visits per se.
None that I'm aware of. Once again, we do travel the county and it's obvious where this location is, but that's the only knowledge I have.
None. None that I'm aware of, sir.
I then need to confirm that all the commissioners will have an open mind and are able to base their decision on the evidence presented and all applicable law.
Can and will.
Can and will.
Can and will.
Can and will.
Thank you. At this time, I would need to open up the public hearing. And I'm going to ask the clerk of the court to swear in anyone who feels they might be speaking in this matter. This is a quasi judicial hearing, so you must be sworn in in order to have the capacity to speak if you so desire to speak during this proceeding. Got quite a group.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now have a presentation by county staff. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Board. Cindy Thurman, Long Range Planning. This request before you is Red Jasmine Land Company LLC's rezoning request from CL to Property contains 4.20 acres and is located along the US-1 highway corridor at the northwest intersection of US-1 and 73rd Street. The 73rd Street is a key connector linking the established limited commercial node to accommodate the convenience-oriented retail needs for the nearby residents. The surrounding land use pattern consists of mixture of commercial to the north, industrial land to the west across the FEC railroad tracks and the Old Dixie Highway, with sparse development and limited existing retail, commercial, service uses, which are usually established in clusters or shopping centers. Within a two-mile radius along the US-1 highway corridor, there are undeveloped properties zoned CG, general commercial, and CH, heavy commercial, to the north and south of the subject property. Notably, the property does not directly abut the FEC railroad tracks and is separated by another CL zone similar parcel. Similarly, it does not border Old Dixie Highway. Go ahead and slip to the next slide. The nearest IG, general industrial zone property is situated west buffered by additional CL zone property, Old Dixie Highway, and the FEC railroad tracks. As a continuation to look at the description and conditions, the subject property, as I've starred here with the blue star, is in a CL area shown in light pink. There is no presence of CH in the area or emerging CH zoning pattern amongst the recent zonings as demonstrated here on the corridor map. If you look at the corridor map here, everything that is labeled with an address and outlined in blue are the most recent zoning changes that you have seen and have been approved within the last year. CH parcels located farther along the corridor are buffered by industrial or general commercial areas and meet the comprehensive plan criteria policy of 1.43, and that is also demonstrated by this map. Here is a look at the zoning map. And then here is the future land use map, which shows the property is situated in a commercial industrial node. A look at the existing zoning, CL, limited commercial, is intended to provide for areas of development of restricted commercial activities, intend to accommodate the convenience retail and service needs of area residents while minimizing the impacts of such activities on any nearby residential areas. No drive-throughs are permitted, no outside activities or storage is permitted. A look at the development performance standards of the different zoning classifications, CL to CH. The minimum lot area, minimum lot width are basically the same, but it does change when you get to the density and the minimum open space required. Look at the proposed zoning. You have a heavy commercial zoning district intended to provide for areas for establishments engaging in wholesale trade, major repair services, and restricted light manufacturing activities. CH provides for support services necessary for development of commercial industrial uses allowed within other non-residential zoning districts. And again, we're looking at the rezoning request is consistent with the commercial industrial future land designation. It is part of an established commercial industrial future land use nodes, as you saw in red on the future land use map. The commercial industrial future land use node designation is intended to provide areas for the development of industrial commercial uses. It is located in areas suitable level of service and infrastructure for urban scale and development, located along major transportation routes and separate from residential areas, and no future land use amendment changes therefore requested as part of this request. And as part of all your rezoning requests, we do have to do an analysis per chapter 902.12 subsection 3, whether or not the proposed amendment is consistent with criteria A through K. Criteria A is that in conflict with all applicable portion of the land development regulations. The land use zoning matrix provided in the land development regulations, the request for CH zoning is consistent with the subject property's CI land use designation. Criteria B is inconsistent with all the elements of comprehensive plan. It does not meet this criteria. The property lacks frontage along the railroad tracks, it is surrounded by CL zoning, and it abuts an occupied non-conforming residence, and therefore it fails to meet the locational criterion for policy 1.43. Item C is inconsistent with the existing proposed land uses. Yes, it is. There is no future land use proposed part of this request. Item D is that in compliance with adopted county thoroughfare plan. The property is at the northwest corner of the intersection of highways US-1 and 73rd Street, so we do not believe that it will exceed the adopted levels there. Item E, generate traffic which would decrease the levels of service the adopted plan. As I said, we do not believe that would, and we believe that the area of influence would operate in an area of acceptable levels of service under the proposed CH zoning. Item F, subject to change conditions exists that warrant an amendment. We believe that the property does not meet this criteria for CH zoning. While the US-1 corridor has seen an uptick in the development of storage and warehouse facilities within two miles of this location, outside an area already established as CL limited commercial, are undeveloped CG properties and CH properties. And we believe that the introduction of CH in this area where it's a sea of CL property would interrupt the existing conditions. Item G, would this change decrease the levels of service established for sanitary sewer, potable water, solid waste, drainage, and recreation? We believe that it meets the criteria. The applicant would be required to pay connection fees, and as a more detailed concurrence review would be conducted during development review process. A quick glance at the most intense, look at concurrence review of rezoning requests gives us a look at the CL limited commercial of 10,000 square feet, proposed under CH at the 20,000 square feet. Most intense use would be 4,200 square feet, 42,000 square feet, 84,000 square feet of general industrial. Item H, would this result in significant adverse impacts on natural environment? The property is currently undeveloped, and there is an existing restaurant at the north end that is otherwise undeveloped. When it is developed, a more detailed environmental analysis based on the sites of the development proposal will be conducted. And with the change result, item A, would the change result in an orderly and logical development pattern, specifically identifying any negative effects on such a pattern? We believe it would not meet this criteria. The request is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, is not in harmony, I'm sorry, the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, however, it is not in harmony with the surrounding zoning districts and would disrupt the existing development pattern. Lack of compatibility undermines the goal of achieving an orderly pattern. Item J, in conflict with the public interest and is harmony with the purpose and interest of the land development regulations. We do not feel it meets this criteria. The request to heavy commercial would introduce conflicting higher intensity uses inconsistent with the existing limited commercial and residential uses already established. Item K, any other matters that may be deemed appropriate in review and consideration of the proposed amendments such as police protection, fire protection, and emergency medical services. We believe that all concurrent mandated facilities have adequate capacity to accommodate the most intense use under the proposed zoning district. So in conclusion, the requested CH zoning district is not compatible with surrounding area as there are no other CH zone properties within the vicinity, is not consistent with the goals, objectives, and locational criteria outlined in policy 1.43 of the county's comprehensive plan. The property is not situated in areas suitable for heavy commercial uses as it has historically been zoned CL, limited commercial, which is more appropriate for the area's character and new residential developments. CH is not deemed suitable as it would introduce uses that could create incompatibilities with adjacent properties, disrupting the intended balance of the area. After thorough consideration of the surrounding land use patterns, compatibility concerns, and consistent with the comprehensive plan, the county's land development regulations staff's recommendation is to deny the request for rezoning. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial at the November 14, 2024, public hearing and voted five to one to deny the item for recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. On December 3, 2024, the Red Jasmine Land Company LLC appealed the Planning and Zoning Commission's November 14, 2024, decision to deny the request to rezone approximately 4.20 acres from CL limited commercial districts to CH heavy commercial district. The applicant asserts that the denial was based on misapprehensions and incompatibilities that are legally unfounded. Based on staff's thorough analysis and findings, the Board of County Commissioners is urged to uphold the planning and zoning's commission's denial of Red Jasmine's Land Company's LLC's rezoning application. The request is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, incompatible with surrounding land uses, and contrary to the public interest. Maintaining the current CL zoning protects the balance between commercial and residential uses in this area and aligns with the county's long-term development goals. We're available for questions.
This is the opportunity in which the applicant or in the board may ask questions of the staff. I do have one just for clarification. We do have a checkoff on a red box that states that the intended use is consistent but is not in harmony. Consistency is well used, but when I see harmony, is that mutualistic, complementary? Does it, what element are we using the word harmony for?
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Chris Baltar, Planning and Development Services Director. So harmony is in harmony with the whole comprehensive plan and the land development regulations. When it's specific to the description of the PowerPoint that Ms. Thurman put on the screen, it's referencing that it's a commercial industrial land use. So yes, it is compatible, commercial is compatible in the commercial and industrial land use. The specific zoning actual request is what is not in harmony with the rest of the comprehensive plan and land development regulations. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions of staff? Well, if the applicant has any questions of staff, this would be the opportunity in which the applicant can speak. We're also looking for that opportunity. The applicant will have additional time as well. Does the applicant have any question? Thank you, Counselor.
Respectfully, I will resume until I make my full presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, what we'll do is we'll move forward to the presentation, if any, by the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Bruce Barquette with Collins Brown Barquette.
Good morning.
I'm here representing the applicant, Red Jasmine. With me is Rebecca Grohl with MBV Engineering and Damian Brink with Red Jasmine. We can all answer questions if need be. Brief background, as the staff indicated, this is a request to rezone property from CL to CH and to appeal the decision of the Planning and Zoning Board, which denied that request. It's a 4.2 acre site. We believe the Planning and Zoning Commission based its decision in large part upon a misperception of the law and perhaps some incomplete information. And I actually appreciate this opportunity to sort of correct the record and maybe clarify it for everybody. First, based upon the information presented to it, the Planning and Zoning Board believes this would violate your code because the property has close proximity to residential development. Residential development. This is repeated in your staff report today. Item two of the staff report, second bullet point, says that the property has insufficient separation from residential development. And then items one and two also say the applicant overlooks the property's proximity to residential development on the same side of the road.
Can you bring your presentation up? They have to put it on the screen.
Can you put up the aerial photograph, please? First photograph, next. I don't do technology. I rely upon Rebecca for that. Okay, so if you look at the aerial, the aerial highlighted is in yellow, we don't know what residential development they're talking about that we're in close proximity to. If you see, if you look.
This is next to my home.
Sir, sir.
Wait.
Sir.
We need to maintain order, and you have an opportunity to speak, and we will not have that. This is a quasi judicial hearing, and it is being conducted by rule of law, and we are going forward. Thank you very much.
The property to the east is across US-1, which is going to be 180 feet wide. In addition, the property east of US-1, which we'll show you on the zoning map, between US-1 and any residences, is already zoned CL. So it's already buffered by another commercial zoning district. Everything east of US-1 adjacent to our property already has commercial zoning. So that's the buffer right there. So that's not, that is not in close proximity. The nearest house is almost 300 feet away. It's across US-1. US-1 has always acted as a buffer between zoning districts in this county forever. The only other residence is in the lower left-hand corner there, and that's a home, but that's not a residential development. Here's, you see the aerial view. The only, so the only possible, go back to the, go back to the other one. The only possible resident that we're near is that. However, according to your code, that's not a residential development. By your code and by universally accepted standard principles, the goal is to phase out non-conforming uses. But let's see what your code says. Residential development, section 40, I mean 901 in your code has the definitions. I'm going to read the definition of development. I shouldn't have to do this because it's common sense, but development is a subdivision of land or a site, and development is defined by the Indian River County Land Development Regulations, a residential mobile home park, and any other construction, whether or not residential, commercial, industrial, office, institutional, or recreational. And here's the important part, except single-family residents on an individual lot. That is a single-family residence on an individual lot. By your code, that is not residential development, specifically exempted from the definition of development. So when your P&amp;Z was told that this is in close proximity to residential development and is specifically cited this home, that was erroneous. It's not residential development. It's a remnant, single-family home. It's a remnant, single-family home. Now, if you go to the next slide, please. That's, that's the home in question. It was purchased in 2016, I believe, maybe 2018. I looked it up. So when it was purchased, it was purchased knowing that it was in the middle of a commercial zoning district. It was not, this isn't a grandparents' home that's been handed down from generation to generation and we're trying to preserve the homestead. This was purchased knowing that it was in a commercial zoning district. Also, look at that photograph and you'll see there's not only, there's one, two, three RVs parked on the property. I don't know exactly what's going on there, but that's not consistent with a single-family residence. Most people don't have three RVs. I don't know if they're being rented out or if other people are living there, but it appears like some monetary funds are changing hands for use of that property already. But let's, let's go to another part, and this is important. I've already established that it's not residential, that it's not a residential development. Even if it was, it's a non-conforming use, and your staff acknowledges that. It's a grandfathered non-conforming use. Well, here's what your code says about non-conforming uses. "Is the purpose and intent of this chapter to permit the continuation of these parcels' structures' uses, which are lawful when created, but which would be prohibited, regulated, or restricted under the terms of present regulations or future amendments." There's the important part. "It is further the purpose and intent of this chapter to promote the phasing out of non-conforming uses and structures." Your zoning code isn't designed to protect non-conforming uses from surrounding properties. Your zoning code is designed to phase out non-conforming uses, and that's consistent with state law and with well-established planning principles around the country. Here's what, here's, I'm going to read a quote from a recent case, that 2002 case in Florida. "Zoning regulations and providing for non-conforming structures and uses look forward to the eventual elimination of all non-conforming structures and uses as speedily as is consistent with proper safeguards for the rights of those persons affected." And then it goes on to cite a quote from a Connecticut case. "It is a general principle in zoning that non-conforming uses should be abolished or reduced to conformity as quickly as the fair interest of the parties will permit." For your attorney, that citation is from JPM Investment Group versus Brevard County, 81872595. It's a 2002 case. So it violates your ordinance and it violates established case law to give consideration to protect this non-conforming use in a zoning decision. I've been doing this for a long time. I've never seen a board in this county or in any of the neighboring counties deny a rezoning because there's this non-conforming use in the middle of it. Never seen that happen, and I can't find any case where that's ever happened. Point three, well, I've already made that point. Go ahead to the next slide, please. We're not sure what's going on in that site, but it's not strictly a single-family residence. Something is happening with those RVs. I mean, I don't know if the owner's here and explained it to us, but it doesn't appear to be strictly a single-family home. But even if it was, it's non-conforming, it's not a residential development, and it's not to be protected. And it was purchased in a CL zoning district surrounded by commercial property in a commercial node. So there was not full knowledge at the time it was purchased that this is a commercial area. The last point I want to make is this. This area isn't a commercial node. It's flanked by US 1, Old Dixie, and the railroad tracks, and we admit it's not exactly adjacent to the railroad tracks, but it's in a mixed commercial zone where the CH zoning is, would be appropriate. Can you put up the... This is the, this is, these are the zoning maps, and this is similar to what was, what was put up before, but all of those that are with the green arrow show that are recently zoned to CH, CH, recently to CG, which is next to our site, our catty corner to it that touches our site, and then the site that we're talking about. So to say that this property is only in an area that is characterized by CL zoning is just not true. It's just not accurate. And the county Planning and Zoning Board didn't have this information. They weren't shown the recently rezoned CH property to the south, because I think that happened at the same meeting after ours, and they weren't shown the CG property on the north side of our site, because again, that hadn't happened at the time. It happened subsequent to that. But those applications were in, and perhaps it would have affected the Planning and Zoning Commission that they'd known, there's a lot of rezoning going on here away from CL, and they should have been made aware of that, or perhaps not. I'm not casting blame. I'm just saying, had they known that, that could have been a different decision. But either way, to say that this property is, that all this corridor is consistently CL, that any CH rezoning in this property would be inconsistent, it's just not reality. It's just not true. And I don't know, you, there's a letter I have here from Neil Hockenhall. He owns the property immediately south of ours, which is now zoned CL, the lower half of which is zoned CH. Those, the C, I mean CG and CH.
Whereabouts, counsel?
Did you guys get that letter? Because he sent me a copy of it, and then I just realized to me, I don't know if he sent it to you guys or not. Did you guys get a letter from Neil Hockenhall? Mr. Chairman, he said he addressed it to you.
I am familiar with Neil Hockenhall.
But you didn't get a letter?
Do not have.
Well, let me submit it then. I apologize. That was, that's probably my error. He sent me a copy and I assumed he'd sent it to you folks. I'll read it in, but can I have, may I?
Longstanding member in the community, and I...
Yeah, may I hand this to the clerk or to you, Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry to make any...
Heard from him if it was. We've got to make sure everybody sees it now. Okay?
Chris, I, Chris, I'll give you a copy of this afterwards. I apologize. I thought Neil had sent it out.
I'll have to give one to the clerk as well.
Pardon me?
I have to give one to the clerk as well.
I will, but can I read from it first?
You know...
I've only got the one. May I read it first and then give it to the clerk?
Why don't you just read it out?
Yeah.
Everybody will have the opportunity, and this will be forwarded to the clerk.
Dear Chairman of the County Commission, Joseph E. Fletcher, I am writing this letter to the Board of County Commissioners to voice my support for the rezoning of Red Jasmine Land Company's property located at the northwest corner of US 1 and 73rd Street from CL to CH. As everyone on the board is aware, US Highway 1 will be widened in the future to become a six-lane highway. Every property anywhere close to US 1 along this corridor will be subject to the numerous side effects of this major thoroughfare, including properties already developed. I might also mention that the Bright Line train adds significantly to those side effects and again supports having properties between the tracks and US Highway 1 zoned to accommodate higher uses. With the amount of housing projects currently being developed just west of the railroad track, as well as, as well as all of the proposed housing projects currently in permitting, there is very little CH-zoned property available to accommodate the businesses that will be needed to service all of these neighborhoods. This alone lends itself to having higher properties along the corridor zoned in a manner that is benefiting a higher use. Regards, Neil Hockenhall, HF Properties LLC. Now, as I said, Mr. Hockenhall's property, the, with the second arrow, second green arrow from the bottom, CH, he also owns the same piece of property that's just north of that and it's zoned CG. He has told us that he would have asked for CH zoning for that too, but the staff discouraged him because of the existence of that house. They recall, they were claiming that that house is residential development and therefore it would be inconsistent to have CH zoning around it. Again, it's not a residential development. It's a single-family home that is exempt from residential development and it's non-conforming. So...
Counselor, I've requested that this be put on the overhead momentarily so that...
That's great.
It is also part of the...
I, I, I truly apologize. I thought when he said he sent this to the county commission, I thought he, I didn't know he meant for me to send it to the county commission.
Okay.
So...
So we'll have, Kim will be putting it on the overhead if you want to continue.
Oh, that's fine.
And then I'll forward this to the clerk.
So I think the recent rezonings around this property constitute a change in circumstances. I think to deny that this property is in flux is to deny reality. This rezoning would constitute, we create a variety of complimentary land uses supporting various commercial enterprises in the area, and that's what's needed, and you've got the market dictating what's needed. To say that we're near, nearby residential development is inaccurate. That single-family home's not a residential development, and all the homes across US 1, again, the nearest one is almost 300 feet away, but between them and us is not only US 1, but also a commercial zoned property. And if you'd like, we can put up the zoning map again, but staff can verify that. So this commercial zoned property exclusive of ours on the east side of US 1, before you get to any of those homes. And for these reasons, we just think the Planning and Zoning Commission didn't have complete information, and we have appealed their decision. We think that the appeal is merited and we'd ask for your consideration. I'm here to answer any questions, and so is my client, so is Ms. Growhall.
Counselor, just as a point of clarification here, I thank you for taking the hit that we didn't get the letter, and I didn't get the letter.
Yeah.
But since it was referring to a quasi judicial situation, once that's noted, I won't receive it. I don't view it. I, you know, I want to be able to...
I'm not sure what you're saying, sir. I, I'm not sure what you're saying.
Perhaps if, if that letter was identified as a part and parcel to the quasi judicial hearing, I would not see it. So if it was sent, thank you for taking the hit.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Oh, okay.
You may have not sent it, or he did not send it, but quite frankly, if it was sent, it was stopped because I won't view anything...
Okay, I got you.
It's quasi judicial.
Well, I take it back. I didn't do anything wrong.
Yeah, so nobody needs to take the hit. It's just that it's a quasi judicial matter, and I do not review anything beforehand.
Thank you. Any questions that I could possibly answer?
Are there any questions of...
What information did Planning and Zoning not get again?
Okay, they, first of all, they were told that that single-family home was a residential development. They were not told that your code says it's, the whole idea is to discourage the use of non, it's a non-conforming use. They were told it's non-conforming, but they weren't told that your, that the goal of your code is to phase out non-conforming uses. They weren't told that. They weren't told that the property, the green arrow just north, that that's, that was in process for being zoned CG. They weren't told that, and they weren't told that the property to the south, the CH zoning, was in, was in flux. That, this map was not shown to them. Now, again, in staff's defense, those rezonings weren't finalized by then, so perhaps it was appropriate that they, that they weren't shown this, but those rezonings have happened since then, and they were in process. So I think it would not have been out of, out of line to show the county, the Planning and Zoning Commission, hey, this property immediately adjacent to ours, it's in, it's in the works to be zoned CG. They weren't told that, and again, I can understand it wasn't finalized, but could have been told that. And again, the property to the south at CH, they weren't, they weren't, they weren't given that information either. Now, that has happened since then, but they were all in process at the time.
Did you present to the county planning and zoning?
Well, I didn't know about these other applications at the time, and I didn't present the planning. We were having our, we were having a firm function that I couldn't attend. And again, I'm not casting blame on staff or anything. I'm just saying the Planning and Zoning Commission perhaps didn't have all the information, and I do think that the staff should have informed them that the goal of grandfathered uses is to phase them out. They weren't told that at all, and that's a very common law, very, very common. I don't think there's any dispute about that. Thank you.
Counselor, Counselor, you brought up a point of, and it reverts back to 23 years ago.
What?
As far as the grandfathering of a non-conforming use, is it a purpose of the grandfathering to allow it so that people have their property rights until it's to the point of extinguishment or, or the sale of the property? At that point, they're not transferable, the grandfather rights are extinguished? Is that correct?
No, sir, they're transferred. This, this owner bought it with, as a non-conforming use, and it was grandfathered when he purchased it.
So you're bringing up the non-conforming use...
He can continue, he can continue the non-conforming use. He can't expand upon it. He can't increase the degree of non-conformity. I'm not saying that.
Or the footprint.
Pardon me?
Footprint.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the staff will tell you what, he can't, generally, you can't expand it, you can't increase the degree of non-conformity, but what you don't do is protect it from surrounding conforming zoning changes. You're trying to discourage the continuation of the non-conforming use. The idea is they want to be phased out as rapidly as is fairly possible, so you allow it to continue, but you don't encourage it, and you don't, you don't make your zoning decisions based upon a non-conforming use.
And the RVs, that's, that's all speculation. I, you know, somebody...
Well, I'm not even sure. I don't know. You can ask Chris. I don't know how many, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't believe I could store four RVs on my property and not, not face some sort of code enforcement situation. So I'm not sure what's going on there, but...
It's true.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe I saw on the materials or someone stated that there were misapprehensions with regard to the planning and zoning.
Yes.
Can you...
I said that.
...comment on that beyond, beyond the residential issue? Because you've already stated that, but are there other concerns?
No, that's the misapprehension. That, that's a, that, that, that single home constitutes a residential development, which by your code it does not, and that...
So that, that's the full extent of it?
No, and that...
Misapprehension.
The purpose of non-conforming uses is to allow them to continue, but they're to be phased out. I don't think they were presented with that.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. You mentioned that the Planning and Zoning Commission was not aware of the other properties that had been recently rezoned or were in the hopper?
They weren't made aware of that at the meeting.
Okay. According to the minutes of that meeting, Ms. Growhall showed the location of the subject property on a zoning map for reference and noted the location of some recently granted rezoning requests. Ms. Growhall also showed a map of the location of the future right-of-way dedication, some other things, and then, so she made them aware, and then later in the minutes, I'm sorry. It says, Mr. Reams asked if the property presented for a request to rezone at a public hearing earlier that evening abutted this subject property, and Ms. Growhall clarified it is separated by one parcel. So per the minutes of that meeting, it would seem that they were aware and took that into consideration, to the point you were trying to make.
I didn't, excuse me, I didn't see a map like the one I showed you in the presentation before P&amp;Z that showed the other rezonings, and the staff didn't make them aware.
I was not at the P&amp;Z meeting, as you were not either, but per the minutes, they were made aware at least verbally, and there was a follow-up question by one of the Planning and Zoning Commissioners regarding said.
That's a fair point.
So I just wanted to clarify for everybody up here, apparently that decision was not made and avoided of not knowing what was being changed in the zoning surrounding the property.
Fair point. Yes, ma'am. Any other questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. And you have no further questions for...
No questions for the applicant.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're going to open it up to the public if you wish to speak on this matter, and if you were sworn in, please come forward. Uh, wait, Counselor?
One more point. Ms. Growhall did not point out the CG property to the northwest, the one adjacent to us. She's just told me that she was not aware of that, and that was not one of the ones that she made the P&amp;Z aware of. And she's here to testify for one, but just to let you know that that was not, that was not presented at P&amp;Z.
Just a point of clarification for Commissioner Adams.
Mr.?
I'm just reading the minutes. That's all I have, because I wasn't there, so...
We have the minutes, and now, if, Ms. Growhall?
Good morning. Rebecca Growhall, MBV Engineering, for the record.
Right, so Counselor has approached us and said that...
Yes.
You, you did not?
Yeah, if we could go back to that slide.
I just want this clarified.
Um, to be clear, what I presented at the planning board meeting, that one right there, the parcel that's...
That, you're saying that one right there, which, of the map itself?
The second from the bottom that says recently rezoned to CH, that occurred later on the meeting, and we had that noted as that they had a pre-app to discuss rezoning. So that's what was presented at the planning board meeting. So, and then later on the agenda that night, they actually had that to rezone to CH. I did show that the very lowest one, the recently rezoned to CH parcel, that one I was showing is recently rezoned to CH. The one above it was noted as being a pre-app, and then the one that I did not have at that point in time was the one that's kitty-cornered to the north westerly section that says recently rezoned to CG. That one was not part of my presentation. That one came up about two weeks after the other one.
So let me phrase it, P&amp;Z was aware?
No. P&amp;Z was perhaps not aware of everything on this current map, but per this conversation and the minutes, they were at least aware of zoning changes in the area.
Correct.
That's valid. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Chair, if I could provide some clarifications since staff's misapprehension and lack of transparency. P&amp;Z receives their agenda before the actual meeting, so all of the items that are in that agenda that go before that board are in there for them to read over and be able to see. That item was on the agenda to be rezoned, which was heard after their case. Their case was before it. And then after was the sequential rezoning of CL to CG, which is what you see on the screen. Cindy, if you could bring up the, that one right there. The applicants.
I'm just...
So at this point, it's, they were made aware, whether verbal or visual, they've had access to that exact information?
Correct. So because of the appeal process, there have been other rezonings that have come into play. Those rezonings were not at that point to be discussed at Planning and Zoning because they hadn't happened yet. So the only thing that was stated was there was pre-apps because that is true and transparent. The rezonings had not happened or taken place, so there was nothing to tell the board or make them aware of because there was no application yet before them to vote on.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you for the clarification.
Question for Chris?
Yes, sir.
So Chris, that was zoned CG, correct?
It was rezoned to CG, yes.
The intensity of the uses between CG and CH, what's the difference?
They provide for lesser intense uses and no industrial uses.
So it's not a comparable rezoning from...
Correct. And the property to the south has more intensive uses. That's why it is CH.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then on residential development, I'd like to make a clarification. So the actual comprehensive plan predates the definition section for what we've updated for residential development. The first comprehensive plan, I believe, was 1978. It was then ratified in 1980. In these code sections from the comprehensive plan, it had this location criteria when they originally developed the plan. They've expanded on it throughout the years, but residential development, when it was actually notated, was any residential uses. That's how it's been carried forward from the time in the comprehensive plan. It doesn't say zoning district in there because they wanted to make sure all uses were protected. For nonconformity, yes. It is a legal nonconforming use. So meaning that it can stay into effect until the use either changes or it no longer exists. That's...
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. We're good. With that, now we will open it up to the public. And if you have any anticipation to speak on this matter, and if you were properly sworn in, please, there's two microphones. We just ask you to identify yourself for record-keeping purposes for the clerk and this commission. And any member who wishes to speak that's attending today. Nobody wants to be first?
I'll be first.
Thank you.
My name is Jocelyn Harrigie and I'm with Orchid Landing, which is a small community just across from US-1, actually, from where the proposed zoning change is being requested. And the reason I want to, I have a two-part question, actually. The first one is, what is the intended use of this property? Once it has been rezoned, should it ever be successful in rezoning? Anyone?
Generally, it's not a back and forth.
The matter...
It is important to us residents because if we're talking about a gravel exchange or something that makes a lot of dust in the air, then we need to know that. And that 300-foot parameter surrounding their property is not going to keep that in.
The question today is, for this hearing, is the classification, not the actual use, or what will be there. I know it may be awkward. Unfortunately, this is about the designation of the use of property, not the actual use of the property. That would be at a different meeting.
The question then becomes, once they have a designation of CH, they are allowed to basically do whatever that designation allows them.
Whatever fits into CH, yes.
Right. And that designation could adversely affect residents beyond a 300-foot parameter.
That is a correct statement as well.
Okay. Just want to make sure I understand what we're dealing with.
But we can't, we don't talk about the uses today.
Okay.
But it did answer your question.
Right. So as residents outside of that 300-foot parameter, if the CH ever becomes the new designation, would we be, would we be able at that point to say, we don't want that? We need some pushback? Or is that too late at that point?
Well, once the designation is made, then if, you know, we can't deny if something fits in that designation, so...
As a resident, I would like...
I think I answered your question.
Yes. That answers my question. Thank you. As a resident, even beyond that 300-foot parameter, I would like to oppose whatever CH designation means, for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a courtroom setting. We are conducting a business meeting in accordance with law. I think we could refrain from the applause, however you feel, the jeers. I don't think that that's appropriate for the decorum of this meeting. Thank you.
All right. My name is Mario Santa Cruz. I also live at Orchid Landing. There's three communities there. Soon there'll be four communities across the street from US-1. Now, the property they've been talking about, that CH now, will now be, from what I understand, another storage unit with boats and RVs. So what's happening here is we're taking CH land, which could be supportive of the communities, like shops and all that stuff, and we're changing it to CH to make anything you want there. Now, that whole stretch from Bosso to 53rd Street seems like there's, that's all there is, is stuff that doesn't service the communities. And that's what's the problem here. It's not having it because we already did designate CH someplace else. It's maybe trying to stop this from happening all over. That's the problem we have right here. And if it does go CH and you say we have no voice in what they build there, then we're helpless. And we are collateral damage, even though we're across US-1 right now. So I don't understand how they decide that we are impervious to anything they can do on that lot. So that's my whole thing, is the fact that CL is being changed to CH and it's affecting us across the street. We don't need any more storage units. We don't need any more RV bases. We need stores and stuff that support the communities because there's more communities coming in that area. And we don't need this stuff across the street from us. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Scott Eckert, resident of Oak Island community. Also, you know, community members with Oak Island Estates, Orchid Landing, and surrounding communities. I also would like to express my opposition to the proposed zoning enhancement to heavy commercial. We've seen exponential residential growth in our area and the surrounding commercial properties that we have are restaurants and dental offices and services that we need in our community. We have parks to the west of us. We have Hobart Landing, Hobart Park, softball fields, the fairgrounds beyond. And I'd like to, you know, thank the zoning and planning commission for the vision of the development of our community for the long-term future. And I personally don't feel that, you know, heavy, commercial, and industrial in that location serves the needs of us, the residents of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Edward Newman. I'm vice president of Oak Island Estates, the sister part of that development we just spoke about. I represent those families there and the houses, and we are not in favor of this zoning change. As I echoed earlier, it's retail-ish in nature. We want that type of growth. We don't want industrial growth there. It just fits with the neighborhood. There's a restaurant there. There is the dentist's place. There's the garden center. That whole philosophy is there. And we would rather see that than any industrial sort of change, especially once it's been designated. We can't affect that change going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Glenn Martin. I'm in Orchid Landing. I'm also the HOA president there. So I represent a whole community of 45 homes. In discussing this, I understand what the zoning is for that. And we need services to support the community. We won't have any ability to make any changes once it's zoned that way. So therefore, I would say support staff in their decision and deny the rezoning. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Joe Juarez. I'm also a resident of Orchid Landing. I think we did not, we need to recognize the fact that there's a restaurant adjacent to this lot. This restaurant also provides outside seating. And I think any type of, you know, upgrading or changing the zoning there would adversely affect this restaurant. In addition, I don't believe any of us, any of us here, including the attorney there, can validate what's going on in the homeowner's property with his RVs. I can tell you, I ride my bike three to four times a day. I go up the sand road. That's another point. The road that they want to build, it's sand off Route 1. I ride my bike there three to four times a week. And generally, I just see the homeowner and maybe one other person. I don't see anybody occupying any one of those RVs. So I would strongly oppose this request on behalf of that homeowner, on behalf of the restaurant, which, you know, everybody from Vero attends this restaurant on a regular basis. And of course, the residential communities that are across the street. We also have to take into consideration the traffic on Route 1. We experienced numerous accidents right in that area. And I think putting some type of commercial establishment there is just going to increase the potential for more accidents. There are a lot of cases. There are fatal accidents. And I don't think, you know, this county would like to endure something like that. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Hello. My name is James Derning. I'm also a resident of Oak Island Estates. That is the community that is within 350 feet of the proposed zoning change. And I just want to echo my neighbor's concerns. You know, I don't know if there's a technical definition of proximity, close proximity, but I would argue that 350 feet is fairly close proximity to a new development of commercial, heavy commercial. And I just ask you to maintain the zoning that's in place. That's my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrew Eli. I own the adjoining property. I do have RVs on the property. They belong to me. I'm not running any kind of a business, not that I owe this attorney any explanation for anything that I do on my property. What they're trying to do is they're trying to hoodwink everybody into thinking they have a real intention to do anything with this property. They do have a for-sale sign out front and they want heavy commercial simply to get a higher price and have a larger market for the property. And I asked the board to reject this. I think it's outrageous. And I hope you can do that. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Santiago Juarez. I own a property, residential property, about 200 feet from this lot and a commercial, the CL commercial, about across the street. And I totally get it, you know, because I own the commercial lot and it would be great if I can change that to CH. But I knew when I bought it that it was next to a residential and I cannot change it. So, and I would respect also the community behind that would be affected. And this is like what other people say before here, we don't need more commercial, heavy commercial. This area is growing and it's a lot of residential coming. And commercial usually takes a hit or it takes off later. First, you know, residential gets moving and then it would be, it would be a good time for, to sell the property probably in a couple of years when there's more residential going on. But if we keep doing heavy commercial, that residential is going to be affected. Prices, they're going to go, our prices, the prices of the residential is going to be affected on the, or the worst. So I don't think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Granero and I live in, I'm affected in that area. And we just found out about this yesterday. So we're all very unprepared. And what I could say is, I just think this is a terrible thing to do to us. Something that wasn't mentioned was our development. We just bought our houses four years ago. These houses went for $600,000 or $700,000. And now, this guy, I'm finding out, I'm going to call him a greedy attorney, is coming in to destroy us. It's going to destroy our property value and make this area just a terrible place to live. And this is going to get out. If this changes, this is going to get out. It's going to make the area dumpy. And I will let everybody know what Vero Beach did to these people, did to us. So I ask you not to pass this and set this precedent. This lawyer, or whoever he was that was prepared for this meeting, spoke of a precedent...
If you attack me again, we're going to have words.
Let's not do that. Thank you, Counselor. I got this.
So I underst...
Let's not do that. Please state your...
Okay, so I understand. So I'm just speaking in layman terms that this is not right to be doing to the people. 300 feet is not enough.
Okay. Thank you. And you did bring up an interesting point. Oftentimes, as we're going through this process, sometimes it's presumed that the individuals in the community are aware of something after it's gone through a process and the P&amp;Z. And before us, oftentimes, we presume that you are fully aware. You're a fairly new homeowner and I appreciate your comment.
Yeah. I just ask that you look at the human aspect of this.
Staff does do the lion's share of notification in the community, but I'm glad you brought it up. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kirsten. My husband and I just moved from Charlotte, North Carolina, to Oak Island. We have had a house there for 10 years. And I've been coming to this area when I was on another continent for 30 years and the area is so beautiful. And I think a lot of this character may be destroyed when we go through US-1 and have commercial left and right. And for the residents of our area, I would really support if this request would be denied.
Thank you. Which one's going to go first?
Hello. My name is Carol Zadrak and I also live at Oak Island. About 20 years ago, I bought the land. We built a house, fell in love with the... We built a house, fell in love with the area, just something special about it. It breaks my heart to see what's going on on Route 1. Everything has changed. Traffic is horrendous. Noise is terrible between the train. All we need is one more big thing going on. And I can imagine the value of our homes, value of life there. It's pretty sad. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for giving us a chance to speak today. I'm Shelley Templeton, and I have moved from Palm Beach County to Indian River County and Oak Island Estates within the year. And it is very disturbing to us what is attempting to happen. Moving from Palm Beach County, where we were there about 25 years, I retired and did tremendous amount of research. Where would I want to live? Where do I find a calm area still near the beaches where we have access to wonderful things south in Vero? But we are more in a calm area where there's land. And it distresses me also what's happening along US-1. If we look at US-1 in other of our counties, US-1 often has restaurants. It has retail that people can enjoy. And it seems like Vero and Indian River County has allowed so many storage units. How many, how many storage units do we need on US-1? Now, I'm not saying those facilities are not important. But we have Old Dixie. We have other areas where those kinds of facilities could be held and stay off of US-1, which is a thoroughfare. When I have people come to visit from Palm Beach County, they're going to get off 60, and they're going to come up US-1. And if we don't need more heavy storage units or storage organizations, we don't need more heavy equipment, we need wonderful restaurants to support the residential areas that are developing there. And many of them are really very pretty. They have the landscaping. They have the beautiful fences. But then we have some pockets that are just eyesores. We don't need any more eyesores. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Donna Santa-Croci. That's my husband. I just want you to visualize in your areas where you live what you would like in the back of your house or in front of your house. Would you like something like that gravel in front of your house? Just the sand and the noise 24/7? Just think, would you like that in your house, outside your house? Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hello. My name is Evelyn Weersing. And I am a relatively new member of Oak Island Estates. I would just like to reiterate what has been said by others who have recently moved here. And the, in particular, the hodgepodge nature of the development along US-1. We have beautiful neighborhoods. And to earlier concept of harmony was mentioned. And that really stood out for me. Because that is, I believe, the idea in Vero Beach that we strive for. Not a hodgepodge. Thank you.
Quite a few folks stood up. Is anybody else wishing to speak?
Mr. Chair. There is a letter from the Indian River Neighborhoods Association. I did give it to the clerk. And Mr. Tocanage has a few extra copies. I can read it in if the board would like.
I think we have a copy of it.
Okay.
Okay. If you want to. It's submitted to the record. It's at the clerk of the court. Okay. We do have that. And you have a copy of it. We'll check again on that. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak regarding this matter? Seeing none, we revert it back to county staff. Do you have anything further?
Sure. I just want to make notation to a couple of things. The comprehensive plan is a guide, guiding document used by local government to shape communities' long-term growth. It typically addresses land uses, housing, transportation, public facilities, and environmental concerns to provide coordinated strategic vision for future development. The land development regulations specifically are a set of rules established by that local government that determines how land can be used, divided, and built upon. It serves as the ground rules for shaping a community's physical environment. And the existing CL district is specifically designed to accommodate the convenience, retail, and service needs of the area's residents while minimizing the impact of such activities of any nearby residential areas.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further from the commissioners regarding county staff's presentation? We have a final presentation by the applicant?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Bruce Barquette again. I don't disagree with anything Chris just said. He's, I think he's right. However, you can't deny that this, this area is in flux. These rezonings are going on all over the place. And it's not just for limited commercial. There's general commercial, there's heavy commercial, and there's some limited commercial. The biggest, and I understand these folks' concerns. If this were going to happen next to my house, I'd probably be concerned as well. It's not. It's across US-1. And it's, could you put up the photograph again, please? Do you have any, I think you've only, just the one of the aerial, the aerial photograph. I mean, I'm repeating myself. But the point is, none of these folks live on the same side of US-1 except, except this one single-family nonconforming use, which I acknowledge is there. The other folks, like I said, they're 300 feet away. And between them and US-1 is other commercial property. Could you put up the zoning map? Yeah. On the east side of US-1 is limited commercial property. That's the buffer right there. This, this property isn't going to affect them. I understand the concern. I don't think I've ever made a presentation to a county commission about a zoning district where the neighbor said, "We support it," because they don't. But then, once the Publix is built, once the facility's built, they use it just like everybody else. So I understand the concern. I just don't think it's, it's well-founded. I don't think it's, I don't think whatever use we put on here is going to have any impact on them. Anyway, that's it. Thank you very much.
I appreciate the, it's on the other side of the street thing?
Not just the street, US-1.
Okay, so it's a wide street?
Yeah.
But I don't know if I would want to see certain development in my community that was across, just across a-
It wouldn't be just, again, the point I'm trying to make, it's not just across the street. It's also behind another commercial district. There's US-1, there's a limited commercial district, then there's the homes. US-1, commercial, and then the homes are back here. They don't front US-1. There's a commercial district between them and US-1. Could you, could you put that up? Chris, that zoning map to show that, please.
So you're stating that US-1 is quite a big buffer?
Not just US-1.
I didn't know we got a buffer.
Apparently, I'm not making my point. You see that, you see, you see US-1, you see the green arrows? When the black line to the right of the green arrows is US-1. The black line, and you see on the right-hand side of that? That's all commercial zoning. To the east of US-1 is already commercial zoning. That's my point.
Please, please.
Anyway, just wanted to point out, that's the buffer right there. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. I appreciate that. Any questions of? Any other questions?
Can I talk?
We had the opportunity for the public to speak, okay? And we moved on to the applicant. We have to run this in the fashion in which it's intended. That's why I pause and give everyone ample opportunity, if they can, and point out where they can speak at that time. I understand. At this point, I want to make sure that all documents and tangible evidence that has been presented to us has been admitted as evidence and are in the hands of the clerk of the court. Madam Clerk? Thank you. County staff agenda and materials are automatically submitted to the clerk for permanent record as evidence unless there are any objections. I see no objections. At this time, I'm closing the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. It was rather informative, and I appreciate everyone's participation. As you know, that the chairman can make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment?
Please.
I just want to remind the board, the standard of review in a quasi-judicial hearing, it's that the decision you make is based on competent, substantial evidence, expert witness, testimony. And I know it's important to you to hear from the public, but popular opinion and just sort of general opposition comments, it does not meet the standard of competent and substantial. So I'm not saying that, I'm just kind of trying to explain to you what your decision should be based on.
And that is why, the very reason why I called order and for the applause. This is not a sporting event. This is the future of the county, the use of the county, and the future of the applicant as well. And this is a courtroom setting. But I want to thank everybody for their input. However, we have to guide our, our decision on the rule of law and the applicable law and the facts and evidence in which are presented. And that's what this board is doing, okay? But with that?
Yeah. I would move to deny the rezoning request by Red Jasmine Land Company.
Second. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to clarify, is your motion based on the analysis offered by staff and the facts that have been entered? Yes.
As we were sworn at the very beginning of this meeting, this quasi-judicial hearing. You second it, sir? Yes, sir. Is there any further discussion? The motion is to deny the appeal and support staff's recommendation and the initial ENZ decision as well. But this is a new vote here.
This isn't right?
Yes.
This is separate, as I understand it?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you all for your attendance.
Thank you for your consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you, counselor. Thank you. And we're going to take a brief recess. You count if you wish as I hit this gavel. We're going to take a brief recess. (applause) Now we call back to order, and the next item is, was formally on number four, which was, it's the first public hearing for the proposed developers agreement between Riverfront Groves Incorporated and Indian River County. Counselor?
Good afternoon, Commissioner Susan Prada, Deputy County Attorney on behalf of Indian River County Attorney's Office. So we do have before you, this is the first of two required public hearings pursuant to Florida statute 163.3225, for the proposed developers agreement between ourselves for the Harmony Isle development. This development is proposed, and it's proposed residential development consisting of 237 single-family lots, 147 townhomes, and they're supposed to be located at 1375 98th Avenue, Vera Beach, Florida 32966. There is an aerial that is attached. I have also distributed an extra aerial, which I will be giving a copy to the clerk here shortly, which demonstrates, if you look at it, there are two red Xs, and on those red Xs, that's the property in question, just for your notification there, if you're wondering where this is currently located. This developers agreement also has some mention to another developers agreement, which the board previously approved for Venetian Groves. That is a development that is just to the south and to the east of 98th, so just south of 12th and to the east. So there will be some reference in this developers agreement to that developers agreement. So there are several items that come forth with this. There's also dedication of right-of-way. The project for Harmony Isle will dedicate roughly 3,534 square feet on 16th Street and roughly four feet wide by the length of 335 feet on 98th Avenue along the proposed right-of-way lane onto 12th Street. This dedication shall either occur either at final plat or upon completion of the associated improvements, whichever occurs first. There are also some other intersection and turn lane improvements that are required. This is where I was mentioning the other developers agreement of Venetian Groves, where some of it goes into it's dependent on whether or not that development moves forward. So there are two different items listed there, and what requirements would be required as far as turn lane and intersection improvements, signalization, different turn lanes, left, round, right turn lanes. There will also be utility improvements that are required by this development. And in here, the developer shall pay the county the proposed development's proportionate fair share of their use for improvements at commencement of construction of off-site, I'm sorry, no, it should say, of the off-site, with issuance of the, sorry, the land development permit of off-site utility improvements. The developer's payment shall be calculated as follows, and it has for the 384 total units, both being the single family and the townhome, multiplied by the price of $800 per unit for a total of $307,200. The only funding associated with this particular agenda item is for recording of the developers' agreement once it's been accepted after the, if it is accepted after the second public hearing, as well as the notice and the publications that we have to do for this public hearing. So at this point in time, staff is simply recommending that the board review the proposed developers agreement between ourselves and Riverfront Groves for the Harmony Isle development, and that we open for the, open so if there's any comment or public hearing, I'll hear from the applicant, which is Riverfront Groves, and that we bring this back for the second public hearing that is required on February 11th, 2025, at approximately 9:05 a.m. or there, soon thereafter, once that meeting starts, for the second public hearing, at which point in time the board would consider whether or not they accept to enter into this developers agreement formally. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any questions of Counsel at this point?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Morris?
Yes, sorry, can't see you. It states that one of the purposes of the agreement, I'm looking at 2D, is to ensure that all traffic requirements for the new development are provided to accommodate the new growth due to the 384 units coming with the HI development, HI development. And then, if you drop down to number seven, it talks about required traffic improvements pursuant to the traffic study. Is there, is this referring to an existing traffic study? I don't have a copy of it.
Yes, ma'am. There is an approved traffic study that was done. I did request a copy from staff. I have copied and pasted the exact language that was the outcome of the traffic study into this, and that is where I have the scenario A with GLH development. And if you go down under seven and it says scenario B, that is the exact language from the traffic study that I copied and pasted into this agreement to make sure that that's fully covered. But I'm more than happy to locate a copy of the traffic study and provide that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions of Counsel? At this time, this is a public hearing, and we'd like to give the opportunity for the public to speak. The public hearing is now open. Would anyone like to speak on behalf? Counselor?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name is Pete Sweeney with the firm of MTC Law here in Vera Beach, Florida. I'm just happy to answer any questions, and I really want to thank staff. We've been working through this, particularly our county attorney and Ms. Prada, Deputy County Attorney. There wasn't really a procedure in place to kind of work through the multiple aspects of this with the different departments, traffic engineering, public works, planning, utilities. So, really good job, and speaking with Ms. Schuler, looking forward to having an even more streamlined process going forward. So I know this is sort of the first iteration of this. Happy to have any questions answered. We do have two technical consultants here. Again, we will have a second hearing, but in all, again, thank you to staff and looking forward. This has already been approved by ordinance. We're prepared to move forward. This is really, quite frankly, to fund the infrastructure improvements that are going to be out there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Any questions?
Any questions of Counsel?
Thank you.
Seeing none, is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak in behalf Having given ample opportunity, we'll now close the public hearing. And I want to say to my fellow commissioners that today is only the first of two public hearings, as denoted by Counselor. We've had discussion, but at this point, we need a motion to move forward to the second public hearing at a future date. Second. That's a motion by Vice Chairman Law, second by myself. Any further discussion?
Can I ask you a question? I don't feel comfortable approving this since one of the main purposes is traffic concerns, and I would want the traffic study first. So, I'm going to vote against it, not because I don't want it to move forward, but because I don't want to appear to be approving it when I think documentation from my perspective is incomplete.
Okay.
My understanding is, this is simply to have a first public hearing, and then it will come back to the board for a decision on the merits at the second hearing?
Correct. So today's just the first of two.
I'm not approving what's before us now. We're just approving going forward and having a further discussion.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
We're moving to the second public hearing. At that time, we will also have ample opportunity to discuss these facts even further. But we're required by law to have two public hearings on behalf of this application.
You can register the issues that you may have, so staff and the applicant is aware and can...
Yeah, I mean, for my purposes, I consider this incomplete without having seen the traffic study, because it's stated here that this is one of the purposes of the agreement. It's traffic, basically. That was that 2D that I mentioned earlier, and number seven of the agreement.
I will be sure to include that for the benefit after.
So I don't agree with the agreement, but I agree with going forward and continuing the discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have no public notice items. Counselor, you're off the hook. She's smiling. We'll now move on to county administrative matters. And the first item is the City of Vera Beach revised request for county funding for the Humiston Beach Boardwalk Project. There are attachments, and they are, they are in your backup. County Administrator?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. If you recall, at the December, your regular meeting of December 17th, the county approved its participation, more specifically, the county contributing $400,000 or 50% of the Humiston project, specifically Alternative 3. Based on community support and private pledges for a boardwalk to be reconstructed, at its regular meeting of January 21st, 14th, the City of Vera Beach City Council rescinded its selection of the concrete sidewalk and selected or approved the concrete boardwalk project. City Manager Ronnie Falls informing of the actions and the associated request. Myself and the Chair met on the 22nd of January with the mayor and the city manager. The city is requesting the county modify its funding commitment from the sidewalk alternative to the boardwalk alternative. Just for, so you are aware, the boardwalk project is preliminarily estimated at $2.3 million. There was also, it was necessary to clarify the private donations versus the private grant. The city is working with the Indian River Community Foundation for the purposes of them being the conduit of collecting contributions from private individuals, and so we are modifying that. I would be remiss not to note that the mayor did inquire, and I'm presenting it to you, if there would be any consideration by the county to increase the amount of the county's contribution to the project. And I would just remind you that the board's funding for this project would come from the county's general fund, and more specifically, from, you know, the undesignated fund balance, cash, or reserves. Staff recommendation is that the board consider and determine the level of funding, if you want to increase it, for the Humiston Beach Boardwalk Project, and approve the revised funding commitment. And I have a, so it would be, Indian River County Board of County Commissioners will contribute up to the amount, whatever that would be, toward the Humiston Beach Boardwalk Project, with the county's contribution not to be more than the city's portion of for the project. Slight grammatical change to this last sentence, less any federal or state grants or appropriations received toward the project. Because we excluded, we were meant to exclude the private funds, but not the, we're lessing out the federal and the state grants, so that would still come into play. And then also direct the county, the direct county attorney to draft a project participation agreement outlining the Board of County Commissioners' commitment and participation in the Humiston Beach Boardwalk Project, and I'll return to the board for questions.
Thank you, John. I will say that this has been, for something that's not our project, this has been a work in motion, and it has evolved. I have to say to the general public, the outpouring of support and the donations, a rather significant contribution for infrastructure, the monetary commitments, and at that point, when all this was taking place, I said, I think we have a project, even though it's not our project. But I did have a conversation with the mayor, and as you denote, they've changed their approach and commitment, and we need to see that firm commitment. I think this board was supportive, for the most part, of the contribution in which we offered... offered to the city during the sidewalk project, and now the boardwalk. Personally, I don't feel that we should change that. I think we should be committed to our original commitment, based on the fact that the city has funds allocated and designated. They do not have a final product yet, but I think the spirit of our commitment should be well maintained. Again, the public has stepped up to the plate, and they feel confident, the city feels confident, as far as the representatives I spoke with, that this project is moving forward. They have some planning to do, some design work to be done, and they feel that, as far as, and we were at the same meeting, they feel that their design work will fall in lines with the financial expectations. Again, I appreciate the ask for additional funds, but we just made it by at the financial commitment that we offered at the present time, at the previous time, and I believe that we should maintain that. But that's up to this board. I think things have developed to a point of we're actually going to see this project. And I felt very comfortable and encouraged by everyone's support. Do we have any comments from the board yet? Because I'll open it up to the public, too.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate you having the meeting with the mayor. Obviously, the other four weren't there. What's one discussion for, I guess, you and John that were there? Was there any discussion about help from any of our, well, any of our, but our representative or our senator?
Not that they were aware of. I did pose that, and the mayor said that he was not aware of any discussion at all as far as an alternative. He was very comfortable and confident in what was presented to, by his board and by our verbal commitment to continued support, if that's the way it was traveling. We did talk about the initial, the initial offering. We talked about the concept of community development and community partnership that the foundation is offering, as well as the very generous infrastructure offering that has to be refined, but it is intact. I'm very encouraged by that. I think they have to get to the drawing board and get to the paperwork and get to design as opposed to an artist's conception or perception of what could be built. But once that takes place, this thing is going to start rolling rather quickly. We did discuss the original offering that, and nothing to do with the state, but we did discuss, well, what happens if FEMA steps up to the plate? And that's a discussion we have to have, because then, in the initial statement, we did say about community involvement. That's been, there's no need for clarification on that. If the foundation wants to support this to the city, they can do so. That is not going to affect our offering, and I think that John has clarified that in the intended agreement. Correct, John?
Yes, we, you know, the essence of the conversation after they revised, informed us of the revised, the revision to the alternative, was that, I just didn't, we didn't believe that the county's contribution at no time should be more than whatever the city's contribution was. So, let's just hypothetically, if somehow they raise $1.8 million through the foundation, they get private donations to that extent, as well as with the other, some other commitments that are in play, reduce the cost of the project, and then FEMA comes back, because if you recall, they had about a $400 and some thousand dollar original request that was denied. Then they was told there was like 284, and then all of a sudden, they get it back, and it's like 80 some thousand dollars. So in their appeal, if they get the $280,000, we didn't think it'd be appropriate or fair to the county for it to be covering more costs than the actual city was out of its general fund.
Correct. Now, and again, that caveat really is a difficult one to apply, because when do we roll to the financial support? And that would be at the time of letting of the contract. So if that's the case, FEMA may not be prepared. I know there's a lot of changes being going on with FEMA, and if they were to revert back to a change, how would this impact our offering? That has to be discussed, because if, you know, I guess that's considered a clawback.
And that's where, I may have should have said grammatical clarification. I used the word excluding previously, and as I was reviewing my prior agenda item in this one, again, it really should be less any federal or state grants or appropriations received to the project. So they would like lower both of ours first, and then what was ever remaining was up to the $400,000, provided we're not going more than what the city's doing.
So this is not to advance development, this is to assist in covering the cost of the development and procurement of the boardwalk. It's not to expand the resources beyond what is available.
Maximum amount, as it stands, recommended from staff is $400,000, as it was before.
And to answer your question, there was no conversation about any state involvement?
Wasn't there discussion about the appeal to FEMA, I think it was 90 days, and if my math is right, we should be getting awful close to that? Have the city indicated any correspondence from FEMA?
At the, at the point, at the time of the meeting, they have not received any correspondence. And as was pointed out to us, you know, we still have money outstanding, we're waiting for reimbursement for Matthew and Irma, our own selves, for one of our beach projects. So sometimes, when they do have a 90-day period, they could, it could be expanded.
And a little bit of history, we can go back to the Rock Ridge development for flooding that was allocated, approved, after it was well-designed, installed, and then the money was requested back. That's why I'm bringing up, and again, we had to negotiate again to get, to maintain the reimbursement. So when we're dealing with FEMA, you know, that clawback, I don't even know if we should consider that at this time and just be committed to our contribution to the City of Vero Beach and the citizens to ensure that this boardwalk gets built. Opinion?
I agree. I'm delighted that the city is moving forward with a boardwalk. It was their decision versus a sidewalk, but I always felt we needed a boardwalk. Thank you for meeting with the mayor on this, and appreciate the change in language, County Administrator, so that the private-public partnership is not being punished in any way. You know, we're not, we're not, you know, we're not looking to take, take those funds. You know, we've made a solid commitment to a solid amount, and, you know, we stand behind it. FEMA is the only big question mark. FEMA is always a question mark. I see, actually, we have Councilman Voss here, if he wants to add anything.
I want to say that you brought up the commitment. I'll tell you, the game changer started on Christmas Eve, and it was, I, you know, they wanted to be, keep everything to a quiet lull about what they would like to do. But I want to acknowledge, because the sheriff brought up the state's involvement, a former state representative and his brother, the Semble family, really made the holidays. And their commitment was actually the one that spawned further conversation, and I believe, well, I could say it's not violation of sunshine, but the mayor was very excited.
Yes, he was very excited.
I think you all had the opportunity to discuss it at your meeting, but that was the game changer. That was the one that I, okay, this is going to happen.
Santa took the form of Mr. Semble.
Yes. Late on Christmas Eve, too.
Yeah, so there's...
Oh, that's perfect.
Yeah, so we considered in-kind donation, a significant amount of the material that would be required to build the boardwalk. There's also a pledge of $100,000 from another individual, as well as another $50,000. So significant contributions. And then there's also with the Indian River Community Foundation, there's close to $20,000 of donations. I know there's more coming in based on the pledges, so, yeah. As far as the potential $400,000 from the county, we'd like that to be not penalizing any of the donations that put forth by the community. And I understand that FEMA, it takes a while for payback, you know, that the accounting part of it would be cumbersome, possibly, but, yeah, anything that you could do to help support this effort. And if we do get overages, that, we'd put that into a fund to help maintain the boardwalk for the future.
And that was one of the concerns of the benevolent contribution, that we look at, this is an investment not for all of us, not for the city, this is for future generations, and that's why they want it built tight and substantial and maintained.
Correct.
And so you're speaking it out. We really do appreciate that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there a maintenance plan? Because that's part of how we got into this situation.
Yeah, so that would be part of the discussion, is how do we maintain the boardwalk in the future? I don't have any information that had to get with Monty Falls or city manager.
It's going to require counsel to allocate dollars for the maintenance, which is, had not occurred.
Correct.
Which is why the FEMA reimbursement is so low.
Right.
So I would...
Potentially low. We're still not done with the appeal. Yes, understand.
It is something.
Yeah, it's like any, any type of infrastructure, you need a maintenance plan.
Right.
Vice Chairman?
Mr. Chair, I think Commissioner Adams must have read my notes, but one thing that we have to keep in mind, and I've had this discussion with, with the administrator many times, whether you're municipality, a county, or a state, or federal government, sometimes we have these, what we would consider boring meetings, when we talk about our capital improvement plans, or maintenance plans, and/or deferred maintenance plans. And we realize that as a county municipality, we have tax dollars coming in, and as mentioned earlier, we are commissioned in satisfying the community needs with what we have. This is an unusual situation, I would suggest, and as Commissioner Moss mentioned, with respect to any of the future maintenance plans, this could be, this could be an example of a road that this county does not want to go down in the future, as an example. And I know some things sneak up on us, we do that, but it also has to do with being a conservative organization, monitoring our fund balances, planning on unexpected things, as you mentioned with Rock Ridge. We're fortunate enough to be in this county where we are prepared in light of lack of funding from the state or the federal government, and we've worked hard for decades to accomplish that. So this may be a learning experience for all entities involved.
Yeah, again, Rock Ridge was...
I remember.
Yeah, you're there. It's slightly over $7 million. It was that, this was not a light little discussion. I will say that we're talking about maintenance, and I appreciate that. I'm not an engineer, don't even play one. However, we did have a discussion about maintenance, and it's very difficult. You're at the oceanfront, and you have metals that are securing cement, concrete, but it's designed for that. And that's one of the concerns. The refreshing element was that, I don't know if anybody's seen any large cement poles traveling through our county. That's the same folks that are generating the benevolence. They engineer that. And if you do go to the barrier island, those bridges, they were part of that as well, which sits in salt water.
Correct.
So, if that's the case, if something's properly engineered and designed to sustain, and perhaps maybe it wasn't then, way back when this was done, technology has far superseded the expectations of so many years ago, that I think that we're on, we could be on the right track. But maintenance is important. I just don't know how you maintain the metal that's inside of concrete, but that's up to the engineers, the designers, and the providers.
I don't have anything, sir, right now. Y'all have covered it. Commissioner Law's statement about, maybe there are some unspecified state dollars that Senator Grow and Representative Brackett could, could obtain somehow to help this. I think it's worth the ask, you know? They could tell you no, but at least you ask. You can't say, you know, if you don't ask, you can't have it. So I would hope the city's working on that. I mean, I, hopefully, I'll...
It's up to...
You know, one of us may talk to them and, you know, about it, about when we're talking about something else, but I think that's definitely something that, that the city should, should at least ask. But other than that, I, you know, this is, this is an iconic area. I understand the situation. I, I'm, I was, you know, obviously was for the boardwalk from the very beginning, but, you know, it just, it should be easier than this, and we shouldn't have to be asking the public to really donate money. I'm glad they are. We've got a very benevolent county, as we all know, very benevolent for everything. But as long as it gets done, and I'm willing, you know, I support our $400,000 contribution, and I agree with the county administrator, but we shouldn't pay any more than the city's paying out of that 400.
In addition, and again, why we're here is, the original ask was to pull it from the TDC money, which we don't do, and then we would be setting a very unique set of circumstances, and then we'd probably be revisiting that many times over. I believe it's fair and equitable on what the commission has supported to do, and I think it well moves this project off the needle. Again, I did have a conversation with the mayor, and it was during that meeting, and I did ask, I did hear rumor about the state, but he was unaware. I most certainly will remind him, but if, if he's able to get some state funding, or if the council is to get any state funding, that, that would grossly benefit it. I don't believe it should offset anything here. Our consideration is about FEMA, but again, I think FEMA will probably be a deciding factor well beyond when the boardwalk is actually poured, or erected, or whatever purpose they use. I think FEMA will come back after an appeal of the appeal, and if it's changed, so be it.
Yeah, I got additional information. For Monty Falls, we are going after state funding. We are asking the state for funding, a request.
You got information that...
From Monty Falls, yes.
Monty is asking the state?
They're going to go request funds from the state, yes, see if they can help.
That's new information? We did not...
That's new information to me as well.
Oh, you just got it?
I just, just got it.
Oh, he's got the...
We are asking the state for dollars.
Okay.
Straight from Monty.
Great, that's, that's great.
Well, that's good. I guess on that 22nd, there was no mention of that, and I guess maybe it wasn't a factor. So thank you for bringing that up.
So I just have one more question, if you don't mind. I know, this is still being discussed, as I understand it, so there's not a single final dollar amount yet?
That's correct. The design has to be completed, so they can get, go out for quote, get estimates, and then we can get the final dollar amount.
And we did clarify that this was for the boardwalk only... And, and we did clarify that this was for the boardwalk only? And there were a couple of amenities?
There was, there was an option added at my request for an integrated lifeguard tower. There is a separate, in that budget, original budget, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a standalone lifeguard tower. I requested, can we, as an option, put that as an integrated structure with the boardwalk? So we don't have to worry about the lifeguard tower sitting on the beach. It should be up there permanently with the boardwalk. That's an option.
But it'll be solicited as an alternate bid, in my conversations with Monty. It'll do the bid for the concrete boardwalk, and then alternate bid for the, the, with the inclusion of the, uh, the lifeguard tower.
Right.
So that, that's part, that's not part and parcel to the commitment to the boardwalk, and it would have no bearing on the decision whether to go forward or not, or the financial burden?
The original quotes did include a lifeguard tower, just not one integrated with the boardwalk as a permanent structure. It was one of those movable lifeguard towers, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the original budget. That was part of the plan for the boardwalk.
So the price of the project, which not, has not been established, we wanna commit to the boardwalk, correct?
Yes.
That would be staff recommendation. I can read that again, just to clarify for the record. Indian River County Board of County Commissioners will contribute up to four hundred thousand dollars toward the Homestead Beach Boardwalk Project, with the county's contribution not to be more than the city's portion of funding for the project, less any federal or state grant or appropriations received toward the project.
But, and, yeah, and I believe the, the city actually had allocated one million dollars to the initial project. Is that correct? Is that still maintained?
That's still maintained, yes, correct.
Okay. All right, so that's their commitment to their boardwalk, and we were in support of four hundred thousand dollars, less the FEMA money if, if it comes to fruition. Is that correct?
I think the language said in support of the city's commitment. That sounds like a million dollars, so that needs to be clarified.
Right, the city committed a million dollars to the project. Original was a, a million dollars towards the sidewalk. Now that we rescinded that decision, we brought forth a boardwalk. They still committed to the million dollars.
So that, that million dollars, keep in mind, four hundred thousand was still in the county.
That's correct.
Alternative three was roughly eight hundred thousand, eight hundred ninety thousand dollars.
Correct.
Rough, the, 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 at least the most recent estimate, uh, so, based on the conceptual plans.
And I.
Council.
And I'd just like to get some clarification, um, because what I'm kind of hearing is that you wanna limit where your dollars would go. And if that's the case, if a motion is made, do we, do we, when we talk about what the Homestead Beach Boardwalk project, project is, does that only the boardwalk? Does it exclude the lifeguard tower? Any type of details that you could flesh out for me? Because I'd be making, drafting the interlocal would be helpful, as well as when you would anticipate that we make our contribution? That's another thing that would have to be.
Yeah, I just say, is that necessary to break it down by element of cost? If you just.
Well, I'm just asking for, because when you, it's when you get the interlocal, you get down to the details. And I'm, we can, you can give me conceptual thoughts, but if you, if you have any direction at this point in drafting those, that interlocal, that's what your motion would be, is to direct me to do it, so.
Well, the board needs to speak up, because I believe that, uh, our consensus and vote was to support the sidewalk. That's changed. We're going to, it was our intentions, intentions, I wanna make sure it's voted upon correctly, that we support the boardwalk. And, uh, I, I think that, um, the only concern I have is later on, let's say we do a, a lifeguard tower and five pavilions and, and just is hypothetical.
Understand, yes.
And walkways that it gets to four point five million. The county only gave us four hundred thousand dollars.
You don't want us to go crazy.
You know what I'm saying? If we, if we set the commitment to the boardwalk, and that four hundred thousand dollar is intact for the boardwalk.
Correct.
So just to clarify, the boardwalk project, or the, let's go back to the concrete sidewalk project, that included the two pavilions and the crossovers for the dune.
Right, yes.
There was consensus that was, I think, reaffirmed here, that would, did not include any participation in the lifeguard tower.
That's correct.
So this would, because there's still gonna be the pavilions, it's my understanding, for the shade, and there's also gonna be the need for crossovers potentially.
Well, the people need somewhere to go for cover, and it just goes, stands to.
Yeah, it's also ADA, there's an ADA accessible ramp that's being built that wasn't there previously. That was another component that was being supported.
But it's required.
It was just the lifeguard tower itself, was my understanding, based on the conversation of the board, was to exclude that.
That's a standalone, we extract that from.
Yes.
Our commitment. Because I just didn't want, you know, because if the thing goes up to four point three million dollars, you know.
Right, no, I understand.
Our commitment is to that boardwalk, because that's what the people wanted.
Correct.
And that's.
And basically, the idea is, you take a sidewalk, you move it closer to the, uh, above the dunes elevated. It's basically elevated sidewalk that looks like a boardwalk.
Right.
Closer to, and all the elements will be the same. Just one added option, if it's financially feasible, to take that lifeguard tower that was in the original design for the sidewalk, and move it up on top of the boardwalk as integrated. That's the only.
Okay, let me just try to make this.
Take another shot.
Because we are like, horse is dead, we buried it, we dug it up, we're still beating it. So, and I'm not really the one that's super supportive of this. I'm in the same position I was at the first meeting and the second meeting. But in an effort to try to move this along, um, this is like a grant. Think of it as a grant, is how I think of it. The county is, the county is giving you four hundred thousand dollars towards your project. The county wants it to be spent on X, Y, and Z. And if you have A, B, and C in the project, just like any grant, you take that part of the grant and apply it to this part of the project, and you figure it out. Like, I don't think we need to get into the minutia of splitting the project. I mean, this is like cobbling together multiple funding sources for a project. Your guys know how to do it, our guys know how to do it. I, every faith that they will keep it the way it needs to be, based on the clear direction now, three meetings of direction now. So I, I don't think there's any confusion on where we are here, as far as I can see.
No, I, I, I don't believe there is, uh, and thank you, Commissioner. Uh, the, but the point is, when do we let out the funding? That, that should be considered. Is that when the project is let out? Is that when we, we would roll out the funding? Because that's when it's needed, once they commit to a contract? That's one.
I would treat it like any other basic TDC grant or CSAT grant. They submit, we've, we've approved it, and then they'll submit for it when they need it. And they're gonna have to provide some documentation that it's not just sitting in their general fund, going towards, you know, the utility bill and bond bonds or something.
They, they got bombos?
Apparently, they probably have better snacks than we. I'm getting hungry, it's after lunchtime.
I, I sense that.
I'm just warning you guys.
Well, if, if that.
I'm prepared to make a motion whenever you're ready.
Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak?
At this point, I'll second it, even though I'm not.
Tom Sullivan, four one eight seven West Sixteenth Square. First of all, I'd just like to thank you on behalf of the public for doing this. I, I think we're building it, and we're building it well. That worried me initially with the city plan. Um, the discussion with the lifeguards is, is an interesting discussion. I used to go down there, you know, eating down that way, and I talked to the lifeguards. I don't know how many of you visited that beach, I imagine everybody. But just to give you a little historical perspective, the lifeguards used to sit outside of their little shanty on what was the equivalent of a bar stool with a, uh, umbrella, okay? And they could overview the beach. I had talked to the lifeguards, and they had said, they think someday they're gonna have an integrated tower so they have a better view of the beach. Matter of fact, the guy I was talking to was a guy who was on vacation, who saved the people down in Jensen Beach. That was a nice thing that happened, I remember complimenting him, I call him a superstar now. But these are the type of people that are out there working. I, I think it's wonderful what Ms. Adams just said. Just give them the money, it's grant money, they do it. They're the ones who have to figure out how to make it better for their employees, the lifeguard. But the lifeguards also are very important in safety. So I think they'll take that into consideration. I just wanted to get up here and thank all of you for doing this, you know? And by the way, I lived in New York, okay?
No.
During, all right. As a kid, as a kid, I worked from eighty-six to one-ten on the Trade Center, I was an ironworker, okay? I went back to New York, okay, to go to the top of Freedom Tower. Uh, and I can tell you, they did not decide on Freedom Tower in a day. I leave you with that.
Okay.
I, I've seen the place before, yeah, watched the towers go. Thank you for your fine work. All right.
All right, anything else, or can I make a motion?
What's the motion?
Uh, I'm gonna read it, just to make sure I get it right. Um, Indian River County Board of County Commissioners will contribute up to four hundred thousand dollars toward the Homestead Beach Boardwalk Project, with the county's contribution not to be more than the city's portion of funding for the project, less federal or state grants or appropriations received toward the project.
Uh, there's a, just, I just wanna clarify something. When you say not to exceed the city's portion, the city's portion is over a million dollars. So, uh, yeah, it, it, maybe you wanna eliminate that.
Okay, we'll eliminate that part.
If you wanna, so.
You want, I'm sorry.
What?
Because, again, that million dollars, we talked about part of that, it was four hundred thousand dollars.
From the county.
Part of ours already.
Yeah, they were committing one, one million dollars towards doing the project. They asked for the county for funds, it was four hundred thousand dollars. That's what, that's my point.
I think Commissioner Moss is trying to say that the county will allocate four hundred thousand dollars. With that four hundred thousand dollars, with whatever that, or up to, not being more, we're not paying more than the city of Bureau Beach.
That's exactly.
Yes, but that, that's not how it sounds, but I.
But for clarification, I can ask that, Commissioner Moss, is that what you meant for clarification?
Um, that's what I read, not to be more than, not to be more than the city's portion. I've read what we have in front of us.
Okay.
The, um, the backup.
I'll be happy to second that.
There you go.
I'm hungry.
Look at this. All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. I told you where I was two, three meetings ago. But, you know, in the effort of moving this along, I can, I can second things.
You stood ground, but you, you, you did second, so we appreciate it. Thank you. Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Adams dissenting. All right. Now we're moving on. We have the lobbyists discussions.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, uh, as noted in the staff report, uh, our lobbyists, our firm, uh, that with the county's been using it for a number of years, almost more than about a decade, was Anfield, and they represented the county. Uh, this past year, we, uh, they actually kinda became part of a larger subsidiary of Gunster Law Firm. And so this year, we're revising the recommendation for this firm slightly. We're in the middle, we're at the front end of the session, but a lot of activity's been happening. So we are recommending in, uh, that the board enter into an agreement with the Arrow Group, who's the name of, with the Gunst, the Gunsters, their subsidiary, for lobbying services through June thirty, twenty twenty-five, for the contract amount of sixty thousand dollars, and then authorize the county administrator to, to execute the referenced agreement.
Mr. Chair, um, I think this is a good move on our part. We need to have this in place before legislative session starts. As you know, um, it's, it's already up and running with the special session. I think with the change in the structure of Anfield and Arrow, the six months gives us the ability to kind of see how that relationship moves forward, and then we can bring it back after, after session if we so desire to extend it. So I would be happy to move approval.
Second. Outstanding. Didn't think it was gonna be a short one.
You seconded it.
Yeah, so, anything else? Yeah, okay, you have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I thought this was gonna be long. We're now moving on to utilities, and I see Sean Leesky approaching. We have an amendment to the Indian River County Department of Utility Services, and that's a rate schedule.
Yeah, thank you, good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, thanks for the opportunity to present today. Sean Leesky, Utilities Director, for the record. Um, back in September, um, when we adopted, or when you all adopted the, the rate study, um, you know, you adopted a very comprehensive rate study that evaluated a lot of our rates and our fees associated with, um, providing water and sewer services. And unfortunately, um, when we kind of got to the point where we started adding these into our customer interface system, our CIS system, um, our staff recognized that a couple of those fees were, were miscalculated, um, within the final rate study. And so what we're presenting today, to the, to you today, is to try to correct those, um, rates and fees as we go forward and in the interest of transparency to the public. Um, the first kind of being the volume charge for no, no county water service available, single-family homes, less than three, thirty-five hundred square feet. Uh, the rate, the current rate is twenty-two seventy-six. Um, the rate that they had proposed, or that was in the study, was twenty-seven thirty-one, um, effective January one of this year, and then thirty oh-four effective October one of this year. For some reason, those were calculated at twenty percent and ten percent, when the rate study was evaluating a twenty-four percent and twelve percent increase for those respective time periods. Um, so when looking at the actual correction calculation, the twenty-four percent for January one would be twenty-eight twenty-two. Um, the, um, twelve percent then above that for ten-one of twenty-five would be thirty-one sixty-one. Um, so we're just asking to correct that. Um, the other one was for the volumetric charge for INI or inflow and infiltration, um, at twelve thousand and over gallons per month. Um, it's unclear why, but in our, um, for some reason, they based the rate off of nineteen oh-six. Um, the rate that we have been charging and should have been charged for this year, um, was nineteen fifty. So they did do the correct calculation, but the calculation was based off of the incorrect starting value of nineteen fifty, um, or it should have been nineteen fifty. So while the calculation was correct, they based it off of the, the wrong starting, um, rate. So the starting rate should have been nineteen fifty, and then based off of that, the corrected amounts for, uh, January one of this year, twenty-four eighteen, and October one of this year, twenty-seven oh-eight. So we're simply asking that we correct those, um, rates and fees, uh, to the corrected amount in, based off of the rate study.
You're asking us to correct a math error, basically?
Correct.
Okay. I would have, is there anybody that, I'm sorry, I was gonna make a motion unless there's.
A script miserror that is, has significant impact on our community.
Didn't go the other way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, I mean, and, you know, I think, unfortunately, no one caught it until we got to the point of actually putting it into our CIS system, when they were kind of calculating it, and they didn't calculate it outright according to what the, the rate study had suggested. And so, um, yeah, I mean, unfortunately, it was one of those ones, I think people looked at a thousand fees and rates, and, um, this was one that, you know, a couple that just, you know, for whatever reason, um, was missed. And we're just trying to correct that.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
I do have a request. The next time you bring it, make sure it goes the other way, like over. And then we'll look like, we'll look magical because we're making it lower.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by Commissioner Ariman. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. We'll move on to.
Thank you all.
Work order number seven for Geocentic for the annual permit compliance monitoring and reporting for twenty twenty-five. Do we have minutes? I don't believe we do. No? Oh, we do have minutes. We do have minutes while we're still with SWID. The approval of the SWID meeting minutes of November fifth, twenty twenty-four.
We have approval.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. See, earlier, we had unapproved minutes and.
I think it's confusing.
Yeah, yes. Okay, I didn't know we had to certify unapproved, so. But, um, here we are, those were approved, and. And now we're going to work order number seven of Geocentix Annual Permit, Complaints, Monitoring and Reporting for 2025. Who's gonna call Bob Solari?
I was gonna say, this is Bob's favorite item, so in honor of him, I'll be happy to move approval.
Second. I'll make the honors. So that's a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by myself, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And then we have work order number 18 to Kimberly Horn for the Solid Waste Disposal District, Annual Financial Reports.
That sounds like it's going to be a fascinating report when it comes out. I can't wait, so I will happily move approval.
Second.
Fascinating.
That's a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by myself, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I see no further business that needs to be conducted before the public, except for an opportunity to speak. If, anything that was not on the agenda, if you feel like speaking.
Commissioners, how you doing today? Happy New Year.
I knew he was here.
I'm calling about, or stopping to talk to you about the infrastructure on our sewer.
And, yeah, I know you, Mike Hooker.
Oh, Mike Hooker, 4, 925 and 931 12th Street.
Thank you, Mike.
I'm sorry, this new to me, I'm, talk strange, I was fighting tongue cancer, they just cut a chunk off, so. Our infrastructure's failing right now for our sewer department. They widened 12th Street some years back, they put the sewer in the middle of the road. Nobody can access the sewer. The Biddle just built the storage, the car storage places a couple of years back. They were closer to the sewer, tossing about 45,000 to connect to a substandard stool. I talked to the sewer, I talked to the utilities department. Utilities department says, look, man, we're always the scapegoat. It's, it's old, it needs to be replaced by 2030, it's gonna be replaced because of all the new rules. I don't know much of them. I am being forced to join onto the sewer for one of my properties on 12th Street and then on the next property, soon as I go into site plan approval next week, I'm gonna be forced there too, which I don't have a problem with, it's better. But I want a tap to be forced to put onto. I have septic tanks right now, drain fields. They've been working for 50 years. They're grandfathered in, but now they're not grandfathered in because of the new rules of 2030. Right now, it's gonna cost me 45,000 dollars to stop traffic on one side on the north westbound lane to connect. So that's right in front of the train tracks. You got MOB there, you're gonna have to shut down 12th Street. When the county has to rebuild this infrastructure by 2030 for 15 of us to join to it, because we're all gonna be required to join to it in five years. So I was talking about the Health Department, Health Department said if we all put in the permit today, the county put in the permit, got approval, got the funding, it wouldn't even be in by 2030. That's the State Health Department and the County Utilities Department. So my question to you is they all referred me back to the commissioners. Look, I gotta come to you guys because we have to rebuild it anyway. I'm willing to give up all the frontage on my two properties to put that sewer system in there. And then that way, everybody else is, has to join it by, by five years, it's already in place. Or we do it on the other side where there's a banded building, the car auto house, the lady that does the dogs, cleans the dogs, and then there's the church. Either side, it doesn't matter, we have that easement under the sidewalk. It should have been done when they ride in 12th Street, but they didn't. It should have been brought up to all the new use that we have. I mean, we have people moving on the beach in Central Beach, tearing down two-bedroom houses with one bathroom, putting up six-bedroom houses with eight bathrooms. The infrastructure's not gonna handle it. You're moving our Water Department, okay, we gotta, the Water Department, the Sewers Department. So when we move that, we have to have that infrastructure to flow to that new, new site. I guess it's gonna be by the airport, I don't know. But when that's moved, everything has to flow that way anyway. US 1's done. Everything west of US 1 to Old Dixie is not done. And that needs to be done because that's where all the growth is. All the buildings have been selling on Old Dixie, everything is moving up, just like the people were saying on US 1 up north. So the, the growth is here already where we're at. It's, it's all old infrastructure that needs to be updated and, you know, the sheriff, great thing. Where is our deferred maintenance and maintenance plan on our sewer infrastructure? We don't have one. Because if we did, it would already been being done with the, the gym, you know. Planet Fitness just went in, they added 10 bathrooms. That's 10 flushes, you know, they added them water tables. They added all this different stuff where they're using a lot more water than the other gym. Publix, everybody there is dumping into that sewer. Okay, and that's the big ones. Now you got the Dires just bought all that property. They're gonna be building, they're gonna be putting in more bathrooms for their building required by building, building code. So we have to rebuild this so that all of us can join on to, to that. Right now, I don't have to pay a sewer bill. I'm being forced to pay a sewer bill, plus pay 40,000 dollars to join the sewer to pay that bill. I don't have to do that if I can just use, my property hasn't changed in 50 years. Five bathrooms, three sinks. Been five bathrooms, three sinks for 50 years. You guys riding 12th Street took a little bit away of my frontage, but didn't affect my septic system. But now my septic system is substandard to new rules. Grandfathered in does not matter, like that house on that corner, that shouldn't have mattered either. It's, it's not grandfathered in, this is planned development. And so I'm just asking for the county's help because everything stops at every other agency until they get approval by us as the county team, you know? I mean, you guys are the ones that can approve all this. And we have to do it sooner than later because the growth is still the growth and it's coming. We can't stop it. I mean, no growth in Vero's a great thing, that's why we moved here 23 years ago, raised three kids. But it's coming. And our sewer system down at our house on 12th Street, River Shores, it's septic. It should have been on that fourth sewer main. How long ago? Just like the beach, the rich people get it all first and then it flows over to us on the mainland, you know? And that shouldn't be right, you know? We're the infrastructure, we, those warehouses I want to build are gonna be all for contractor use. Two turns to the beach to support all those people and taking care of their houses, their plumbing, their electric, their landscaping, all of that. We have no more, we have no contractor warehouses. We got self-storage, which those people are right, we don't need anymore. There's gotta be two units for every resident of Indian River County. Who needs more self-storage, you know? We need contractor warehouses. But my point is, we need the infrastructure to support all this growth. And the maintenance plan that Sheriff's is talking about, we need to know where is that right now? Because my, my street has 15 people that have to join that by law by five years from now. It cannot handle three more people joining it in the next five years. It just won't, it won't work, it's too small. So that's basically what I'm here about.
What's your address again, sir?
931 and 925, the old Rinker Plant and the old Pat's Auto Parts Store. And you know, it's been there forever, it's, we're not changing the footprint, you know, we're just changing the use. And you know, the use is like, right now, Ted's a thrift store, you know? He's got two ladies, nobody uses those bathrooms, but we, we gotta pay 40,000 dollars to, to join something that we can't even join. We gotta shut down the street, we gotta cut down the street. I mean, the sewer should run alongside the streets to impede traffic, you know, especially by the train tracks. And then another thing, how do you stop a train? You put in a station. I mean, nobody wanted that station, if we would have a station here, the train would stop and get going. It would never broke 20 mile an hour at leaving, coming into our county. But that ship sailed too, you know? So, I mean, just can we get our infrastructure right so we can all grow together? Because I'm at a no-growth point right now and I want to support our county. And I've been supporting it for 25 years with multiple properties and multiple tax bills that get paid every year. So I just think that in that sewer part, you know, I'm paying a sewer bill and I don't have a sewer. You know, I'm not connected to it, you know? So I, I just want some help with 12th Street. And you, you can talk to the Utilities Department, they'll say the same thing, man, they're getting yelled at all the time, but they can't do nothing, their hands are tied. So, that's my gripe and I don't gripe a bunch, I just, you know. I'm, I'm happy for all y'all, y'all have done a great job, I appreciate our county. It's just we need to worry about that maintenance plan and that, and that, that's a huge thing right now. And sewer is sewer, that's every, that's garbage. It's everybody's waste, it's gotta go somewhere. They can't break in the middle of the night and shut down roads and have nastiness all over our roads going in to our drain system that leads to our river. You know, that's what we don't want with our septic systems and we don't want it with our sewer system either because our sewer system's old. Thank you for hearing me.
Mr., this is your opportunity to speak. Again, we, we don't customerly take action on opportunities to speak. However, speaking with the Utilities Director as well to see if there's any alternative that would ease the burden. I understand you have a large operation or, and, and property and many do and they're dependent upon getting us to that 2030 mark as well.
And if we're all forced, that's what they told us at the Health Department. If we were all forced to join tomorrow, three of us could, nobody else could because it cannot handle every, those 15 properties joining that line on that sewer right now, it cannot handle it. So it has to be replaced anyway. So why are we forcing everybody to join it, you know, bits and pieces when we can just put in the new sewer, put in 15 taps and then everybody can join at their leisure? But the system will handle the growth. Right now, the system won't handle the growth if everybody's joined by 2030. That's the point that the Health Department has made. If we went in for, for, for funding and approval and permitting today, that we would not have it by 2020, by 2030.
I don't know if it's an accomplish- accomplishable mission, however, it's worth the discussion.
It is, I mean, it's our whole infrastructure is relying on it. And every business and property owner that drains into said system that can't reuse their system that they have currently because it's outdated, just like the current system is outdated. So we gotta pick one or the other, I think.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you guys, y'all have a good day.
Anybody else? Councilmember? Alright. Seeing no further, this meeting is adjourned.